I'm now calling today's Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting to order for the date of Monday, June 11th. And at this time, as many of you know, it is necessary for us to identify ourselves as CRA, as members of the Board, those of us that have any sort of ownership or control of interest of properties located within the CRA. I will begin with Councilman Gerald's. Move down.
I have no interest.
All right.
I have none.
Except genuine interest.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I have none.
All right. I do hold interest in properties. Excuse me, Councilman Townsend.
Fortunately, yes.
All right.
And I too am a resident of the CRA.
All right. Thank you. Our first action item is the approval of the April 9th Board Meeting Minutes.
Need to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the April 9th Board Meeting Minutes. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Our next item, our next action item, is the award of contract for bid number 12-029, and that is the conversion of both Balin and Spring Streets from their current one-way configuration to two-way.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Yes, Councilwoman DeWes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a quick question because there weren't drawings in there about the actual, the elevation for the street, like what the lines will be and if there will be bike lanes and such. And I've had a couple folks ask questions. And you know, part of the complete streets concept that we're all working towards, my idea was that logically, if you had Spring Street shift, well, let me back up. I have a street in my neighborhood which is Wimbledon, and it was painted as such after it was paved a couple years ago, and it shifted the whole roadway to the south, no, excuse me, to the north. So you have a bike lane, you have two lanes of traffic, and you have parking on one side of the street only. So that would be my question that would be added to this process of completing this two-way of both of those, if we could address the bike lane, and not try to put bike lanes on both sides of both roads, but a bike lane heading south on Spring and a bike lane heading north on Balin for a lot of the people in North Hill that like to ride their bikes downtown, and vice versa.
All right.
Could that just be part of the record?
Okay. Any comment from staff on that?
I've got actually with me the pavement marking sheets, if you'd like to see them afterwards. Given that the actual restriping and redesignation of parallel parking spaces would come towards the very end of the project, probably like the last week or 10 days or so, there is definitely still some time to make individual modifications. I don't know about the width of the road, if it will accommodate a bicycle lane. I know that parallel parking is critical in this area to serve the downtown businesses and a lot of the residential areas that don't have off-street parking as part of their units. So that's something definitely we can investigate.
And I know there were some new bump outs added, I think, to Spring Street for traffic calming, so that, I think they're on the eastern side of the street. So I'll just follow up on that then. I mean, I'm full support of the project. I just wanted to see if we could add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Myers.
Thank you. I have the same concern that Councilwoman DeWes has, and when I looked at this, I just wondered, how is it really addressing a complete street concept? And how would it, changing it, accommodate bicycles and pedestrians, increasing accessibility for bicycles and pedestrians? And so that's something I would like to take a look at. I'm not sure that two-laning it, making it two lanes either way, will accomplish that.
Two-way conversions are successful in creating a more pedestrian and bicyclist-friendly environment in that traffic speeds generally slow down. Motorists have a more attuned field of vision in that if you're driving on a one-way street, you very much have the sensation of being on a highway. On a two-way street, you've got more visual interactions, so you would be looking for pedestrians and bicyclists more. This project wouldn't achieve the true implementation of complete streets, although Spring and Balin currently are served by public transportation. ECAT does have routes on both of those streets. There's already pedestrian facilities there. We may explore the addition of bicycle lanes, but making the area more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly will come generally from the traffic calming, the slowdown, and kind of the more residential feel rather than the feeling of a highway.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Any other comments from Council? Yes.
I just wanted more, because we're on the sort of top. There's no landscaping. It's just we're restriping, changing stoplights, changing...
Yes, I believe there will be some work for the curb and the gutter, some relocation of utilities, the new signal mast arms, and restriping.
Thank you.
All right. Any other Council comments before I recognize the audience members that have submitted a card? Okay, Mr. Christian Wagley.
Thanks, Mr. Spencer. And again, Christian Wagley, 801 East LaRue Street. Want to go ahead and encourage you to pass this as it's presented today. I know it's not perfect. We may not have landscaping, we may not have a complete street yet, but as Ryan mentioned, this is really a great step toward calming the traffic in that area. And as somebody who's out there every day walking and bicycling through our city, in fact, I rode my bicycle here, I greatly look forward to being able to travel through that corridor in a way with the traffic that's been greatly calmed. It does make it much more friendly for pedestrians and bicyclists through doing that. And I think this is another great example of another great step forward in terms of revitalizing our city. There are many wonderful things happening to create a more healthy and dynamic city. And just a reminder, this is something that was approved by all of you in the CRA plan back in 2010. And just to give credit to the staff and to the mayor and all of you for bringing all this forward and working the processing and bringing it forward today, and I'm just real excited to see it happen, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagley. Next is Mr. Kim Kimbrough.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Kim Kimbrough. I'm here on behalf of the Downtown Improvement Board. We were one of the first supporters of this concept when it was first proposed a little over three years ago. We remain probably its most enthusiastic supporter even today, for all of the reasons that Ryan mentioned in terms of traffic calming and making the street more pedestrian-oriented and a more pedestrian-user friendly, but it also increases visibility for the businesses and the activities along the street because the traffic is going slower. And we hold up as Exhibit A the change that has occurred on South Palafox and South Balin when we took those two streets back to two-way traffic. The change has been phenomenal in terms of the increase in pedestrian activity, the increase in business activity, and the increase in visibility for the businesses that invest in our community. So on behalf of the Downtown Improvement Board, we strongly encourage you to move forward with this staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Sansing.
You know, I liked what the public had to say there, but I mean, bike waste-friendly, environmental, and all that, but we just had a flood here. Now, one thing, it's like down at the end of 9th Avenue. I mean, I've seen cars stranded down there. We know that within this area, oh, I'm a member, I live in the CRA too, okay? I'm very concerned about it. It seems like we have focused too much in the past on the CRA, but let's go forward with it. I love the park down at Admiral Mason Park. It's beautiful. I mean, years ago, I mean, the county's trying to tell you to do something like that because you created a dam there, where it's gonna be flooding. So before you do too much within the CRA, think about what we have just witnessed, storms flooding out within the CRA. I have warned in the past, you don't build in harm's way. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sansing. Are there any other audience members, attendees? All right. No further comments from Council? We have a motion and a second to award the bid as presented. Does anyone want to restate that? That motion that was, because it is strictly on our agenda, is the award of the contract according to bid number 12-029. And further documentation is certainly provided in our packet regarding time schedule, pricing. Our motion did include the added request by Councilwoman DeWes to, prior to striping, to at least explore possibilities for incorporating bike lanes, and that's it. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I would like to recommend that you direct staff, though, in the future, to flesh out that recommendation just a little bit more, you know, one, a longer sentence, you know, rewarding the contract to so-and-so so that we can state that as part of the motion.
There is the recommendation in there, he just didn't read it.
That could be a shortcoming on my part, Mr. President, but I felt that the agenda listing that bid specifically by bid number allowed us to do that.
Then I'd recommend that you read out the recommendation next time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Our next item on the agenda is a discussion item, and that is an update on CRA projects' activities and operations. And at this time, I would like to call on Ryan to provide us a presentation so the audience can also participate in being brought up to speed on our CRA's activities.
Thank you, Chairman. Per the City Council's request on May 24th...
And Ryan, go ahead and pull that microphone up closer, and try to speak a little bit as though you're in the south, if you can.
I am from the south.
I know.
Well, per the request of City Council on the May 24th City Council meeting, I've attached a list in your agenda package of some of the current projects, activities, and operations that I'm working on as CRA administrator. Some of these in the future will come before the CRA Board for individual approvals, whether that be contracts or lease amendments, and some of them will not. So I wanted to provide an update on some of the things that are currently happening in the CRA. And in terms of process, Chairman, would you like me to go through them and then offer some detail, or does anyone have any questions before we start? Okay.
No, I think this is exactly what the Council requested.
Excellent. Okay, well then, in my position as CRA administrator, I manage the day-to-day operations and functions of the CRA. Many of these have been ongoing for quite some time, some of them are newer. So just starting at the beginning of our list, there's a couple projects that are going to be coming before you. The first, of course, today, was the conversion of Spring and Balin Streets to two-way traffic. And this has been something that the CRA and Public Works has been working on since 2009. Next, included in the CRA 2010 Master Plan was a project referred to as Baywalk, which is a multimodal bicycle and pedestrian path that will run along the Pensacola Bayfront, linking up the various points of activity, destinations, and uniting the coastline with downtown. We were so fortunate enough to have received a one-to-one matching grant from the Department of Environmental Protection for the design services for a phase of that project, which will span from the Missing Children's Memorial to Bartram Park. So I'm serving as the project manager on that grant, and we will hopefully soon be executing a contract with the design firm that was selected by the Design Review Committee. Then we will begin the public input process and the workshop process so the public can envision what they would like to see out of this Baywalk project. Third on the list, that actually stemmed from the conversations regarding the Baywalk project, would be the potential transfer of Bayfront Parkway from the Florida Department of Transportation to the City of Pensacola. And in my role in this, currently, right now, I'm just doing background research and a brief feasibility analysis to investigate some of the issues that would be involved in this transfer. Through the Baywalk process, we began to have conversations with the Department of Transportation about our ability to alter the right-of-way along Bayfront Parkway, and it was clear that if the city were to maintain ownership of that road, one, our ability to alter the right-of-way and perhaps explore road diet or additional bike lanes as proposed in the 2004 Historic District Master Plan would, of course, be greatly enhanced. But this is something, again, that is still very conceptual. The request now is in the mayor's office, and if he decides to pursue it, that will be something coming before you in the future. Then fourthly, the HIX Art Economic Development Agreement is making progress on July 1. That will mark our financing deadline and closing date. And I've spoken to Michael Hicks, and he is well on track to receive the necessary financing and proof of financing on July 1 from Beach Community Bank. And then moving on to activities, the first is a list of general activities that the CRA has done for years and that I have taken on as well. Currently, right now, I serve as staff to the Mayor's Urban Redevelopment Advisory Committee, which is a new initiative. I attend the meetings and help with general process, and also help with some Sunshine-related issues that I can distribute information to the committee members without getting them in trouble. Then, a project that you all have heard about for several years is the creation of a ferryboat service for pedestrians linking downtown Pensacola to the Gulf Islands National Seashore and Quiet Water Beach. That's something that I have applied for a federal grant through the Ferry Boat Discretionary Fund, through the Federal Highway Authority to fund, fingers crossed for that one still. And we will be working with the Gulf Islands National Seashore as they are currently constructing a ferry landing on their end of the system. So we just now need to find the boats to link it up. Then, the Commercial Facade Grant Program, which is something that the CRA has done for many years, I'm currently in the process of working with several applicants to see if they can meet the requirements of the program and get their applications ready. The facade grant process itself, it's a five-year program, so each of the grants has a cycle that it runs through over the course of those five years. So there are grants that were issued five years ago, and then anything between then and now is in the hopper. Then, something that the planning staff and I have been working on is the streamlining of a process for sidewalk cafes. Currently, as you know, you've seen them often, the sidewalk cafe process goes through the standard license-to-use process, which can sometimes take two to three months, sometimes even longer depending on the meeting cycle. And that's something that we felt that is excessive in terms of the burden and the amount of time it takes on a small business if they're in the startup phase. So we will be looking at perhaps streamlining this process, making defined standards, perhaps something we can approve administratively, rather than send someone through the process of going to Planning Board and City Council for the approval of a license to use the right-of-way for tables and chairs that arguably can be brought inside every night. Then, something that you may not realize the CRA does, is that any time a vessel wants to come visit a Plaza de Luna, they go through us. For example, we will have the Yorktown in fall of 2012 and a small cruise ship called the Grand Karib in 2013. So that's very exciting for our downtown in that the people who come with those vessels shop, they go to our restaurants, they enjoy our city. You've also probably seen the Weatherbird 2. It's been here twice over the last couple months, which is a research vessel through the University of South Florida. Then, like all cities with older facilities, I've had to make enough repairs to Plaza de Luna and 16 South Palafox. Specifically, Plaza de Luna was struck by a vessel visiting from the port, and there were some damage to the bulkhead, which as the tide would come in and out, it would pull the soil out with it, and we had some subsistence in our sidewalks. So I've contracted with a concrete specialist who has been able to repair that damage and make sure that our sidewalks are in good condition. And like all 100-year-old buildings, 16 South Palafox has its myriad of concerns. I've also prepared the 2013 budget, and we'll be presenting it to you in July as part of the budget hearing process. And I have been giving several presentations to the Gulf Coast Diplomacy Council, group of visiting delegates. We have another group coming next week from Yemen on how the CRA operates, and we interact with the public sector and the private sector here in the city. In terms of future things I'll be working on, the University of West Florida has assembled a cultural heritage tourism task force based upon the presentation that Mount Altier gave to you a couple weeks ago. There's been a lot of interest generated in the community, and I'll be a part of that, representing the city. And then, based upon the final report that the Mayor's Urban Redevelopment Advisory Committee produces, based upon the mayor's direction and this council, we will be implementing projects, recommendations, policies, incentives, or land development code amendments. If anything were to come of that final report, I would be helping with that as well. And of course, there's been continuing conversations about the feasibility and potential implementation of smart code. Then, in terms of the operations of the CRA, there are 25 years of development agreements and lease agreements since the CRA has been founded, and many of those are still in existence and they're still around, and they still need maintenance, and people still have questions about them, so that's where I'm able to assist. There are also several dozen inter-local agreements with other agencies, whether that be the CRA, or sorry, the city, the DIB, the Pensacola Economic Development Council. There's formalized documents that spell out our relationships. And then things that will be coming up shortly, the concession stand at Plaza de Luna, the three-year lease of the current tenant will be expiring in August, so we will be releasing a new RFP for services there. I'm currently in the renegotiation process of the Cedar Street Parking Lot, which is a parking lot that is leased to the Ale Stock, which Increase and Overholz Law Firm. And then those next three items, there have not been official requests, but some of our development agreement parties have requested some potential amendments to their leases. Marina management, for example, may be interested in expanding the Jaco's Restaurant downtown on Palafox Pier to include back-of-the-house operations, and then also make some physical improvements to the rear of the building, which is what you see from Plaza de Luna. Then the Wine Bar has expressed some potential interest in amending their lease, as well as Play, to sell and serve some items that were not included in their original lease. They're very specific documents, so every time someone wants to do something different, we would have to make the formal update, and that would come before this body as well. Then just generally, I assist in the management and facilities management of the CRA-owned properties and facilities, of course, working very closely with Charlie Morgan, who is my savior in building maintenance. For example, I've been assessing some of the flooding damage to some of our facilities, like 16 South Palafox. The Play, which is on the second floor, has continual problems with a leaky roof, so that was something that they unfortunately experienced this weekend. They do in normal storms anyway. And then, for example, the fountain has to be annually inspected, the water sprinklers are biannually inspected as well, so I'll handle that as the property management side of CRA. And then in terms of the administrative duties of the CRA, of course, CRA Board agendas, meeting notifications, preparing meetings, doing the CRA report that you'll see in City Council on Thursday. Again, I staff the Mayor's Urban Redevelopment Advisory Committee and help prepare that meeting and do notifications as well, distributing info to the members as part of Sunshine. I monitor the budget and expenditures. There's monthly requirements that our finance department requires of us, including budget transfers, approving invoices. The CRA also has a contract for trash service downtown, and that's something we monitor as well. And then, something that I have been working on recently is that we do unfortunately have a couple problem businesses in the CRA that have been negatively impacting their neighbors, so I'm working closely with our code enforcement department, building inspections and police to get some of those issues cleaned up for the neighborhood. It is, it's quite a problem for them. And then in terms of some annual things that come around every year, we have some inter-local agreements that will be coming before you in September for their annual approval before the new budget is adopted for 2013. Again, the 2013 budget is something I prepared, as well as a bondholders' report and the annual CRA report that goes to our various taxing agencies. So that's it, briefly. If anyone has any questions about specific tasks?
I'm gonna start on this end and work around counterclockwise. So, Councilwoman DeWes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your briefing. It was very in-depth. I just wanted to make sure, because I don't recall if it's part of the budget in July, that a listing of all of the contracts that the CRA has entered into, all the interlocals, any of these properties that were mentioned, that that be part of that annual budget so we, as well as the citizens, know, you know, the dates of the leases, not just a listing of who they are, but what the terms of them are, so we understand kind of what's coming. I know that that would be useful for everyone. So I don't know if it's part of the budget or not, Mr. Chairman.
No, I think I was going to mention the same, or offer the same request, that we be provided with what I would call just a lease summary sheet, at least term, terms attached with all of those leases and interlocal agreements. So I'm sure now that you've heard that we would benefit from that, let's include that in the budget presentation. Yes?
Thank you, and I would be interested in reviewing those documents as well.
All right. Councilman Gerald, Councilwoman Myers.
Yes, thank you. That was a really good presentation, and obviously, you're very busy. And I think I requested that we have this update, and it has been extremely beneficial. And I hope that we can start having maybe quarterly updates because you are obviously involved in many things. I don't know where you find the time to do everything that you do, and you do them well.
Thank you. And also, Karen Montgomery is our shared executive assistant between the planning and CRA department, so I must mention Karen. She's incredibly helpful.
Well, you're all very busy. And one concern I do have, though, is the, my ability to make inquiries and get information from the CRA staff. In light of the Mayor's May 15th memo concerning communication with staff, I recently made a note, I don't like to have to make open record requests to just get simple information. And recently, I made an open records request for some, a survey that had been done by the CRA on the sidewalks in the CRA district. It wasn't like a real detailed, professional ADA survey. It was just kind of, let's look at this and kind of have an idea of what's going on survey. And I know that we spoke briefly about it. You sent me a map that did not have the street names on it, so that wasn't very helpful. But it did kind of concern me that in order to actually inspect some other documents that go with that, in light of it being an open record request, that I was instructed by you that I have to go either to Mr. Reynolds or to Mr. Asmar to make an appointment with our CRA administrator. And I found that a little disturbing, but nevertheless, I just want you to know that I think you're doing a great job, and the information you brought here today, I feel was very helpful to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lu.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Fine report.
Thank you.
Very, very impressive, all the things that are going on. My only question was on number three at the top, and that is the transfer of Bayfront Parkway to FDOT. And I'm going to ask three questions, and rather than put you on the spot, these are three questions that I'd like the answers for down the line, so you, I'm not expecting you to give it to me now. Number one, if the Bayfront Parkway is transferred from FDOT to Pensacola, question number one, is the responsibility for the upkeep and the paving then become responsibility of the city versus the state?
Yes.
Number two, my question is, what is the cost of that repaving? And number three, when is the schedule to be done again?
Well, I can speak to you very briefly, in that the Florida Department of Transportation right now is analyzing what it costs them to maintain the facility every year, and they're exploring the possibility of contributing some maintenance funding along with the transfer. That's something that hasn't certainly been decided, but that is something that they are researching. So I don't know when the next repaving is scheduled, but that's, again, that's one of the major issues that we are exploring in these discussions.
Do you have a rough idea of what it costs to maintain per year?
Afraid I don't. I don't. Since the road was damaged fairly heavily during Hurricane Ivan, that probably threw off the entire schedule since it was practically rebuilt.
Exactly. But hypothetically, if we had all had ownership in that when the hurricane occurred, then it would have been the city's responsibility to rebuild that road versus the state.
Whatever.
Okay. I think you're getting a drift of what my concern is.
Sure, sure. And those are all things that absolutely we will discuss. This is very much in its infancy right now.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes?
You mentioned it twice. I figured it was pretty important about how old the building is at 16 South Palafox. How old is that building?
Oh, I knew you would ask that question. I could look it up for you, but I'm afraid I don't know off the top of my head. But interestingly, the roof, I found rather fascinating, is that there's a single membrane, flat... flat roof, which is normally never a problem in downtown buildings, except for 16 South Palafox, whether by the grace of its street frontage, often gets cigarette butts and broken glass bottles thrown on its roof, which either burn through or puncture the membrane. So, that's something that happens fairly often, and that is something that we are exploring, a potentially, an innovative solution, whether that's a net, some sort of sacrificial layer, something to protect the roof from punctures and burns.
All right. The, I don't want to know the businesses' names, but the two problem businesses that you said, what sort of problems?
Generally, with alcohol consumption, drugs, other illegal activities, and there may be investigations coming.
I think I know what you're talking about.
You probably do.
Okay. On the ferry landing, the grant that you applied for, would that be sufficient to cover the full cost, or would the city be, be out, CRA be out money on that?
Well, let's see, the grant that I applied for, I kind of went for the big bucks and applied for the full $5.4 million, which would fund the construction of two 95-person passenger ferries, as well as make improvements to Plaza de Luna for the passenger ferry landing. We would be able to utilize Plaza de Luna and then the bulkhead at the Maritime Park when that does come online. So, what the CRA would do is that these boats would be owned by the city, and we would contract out for the operations, and that is the plan that was proposed in that grant. The situation's changed a little bit with the Gulf Islands National Seashore, the person I was speaking to had retired, so I need to begin conversations with a new person, but that is the last process, as I understood it, that the city would own and, own the boats and the facilities, but contract for operation.
And where does the Naval Air Station stand on this? I know that there's been discussion, but they weren't mentioned today.
They weren't, no, I've not seen them in any of the previous other project proposals, perhaps for security concerns, but that is an ideal location with access to the Naval Museum and Fort Barankas as well, so that's something we could probably begin conversations with and see if they're okay with pedestrians on their federal facility.
Okay, all right, well, thank you so much.
All right, Councilwoman Townsend, none, Mr. Johnson? Yes?
I wanted to echo Councilwoman Lu's comments about the Bayfront Parkway, I think that, you know, I don't think we have the money anytime soon to do any of the grand plan, and so I'm cautious why we would want to incur a potential liability when we're not going to really be doing anything with it. And I guess this might be a question for the city attorney, how would, would such a, you know, if the mayor negotiates with the state, would that come to the council? To, before it becomes?
Sure would.
Okay. And my second question is, this is something I have vague recollections from my time as CRA chair, that there were plans floating around to provide electrical service for boats visiting Plaza de Luna, and I'm not sure where that stood, but I think that that is something that needs to be looked into. I think previously, they ran cords, and there were some problems that we can't get certain boats because of the power we're able to give, and so, so I'd like to at least have a sense of where that stands and what the potential cost of doing that would be, because I know that was in the works somewhere.
I wasn't aware of that specific issue, but I know that the concession stand at Plaza de Luna does have some electrical and mechanical limitations, and some upgrades have been proposed, and that perhaps is part of it.
And I think it was maybe wrapped up in there, how to, you know, get more power there so that they can, they can cook their food and provide power to a boat.
And then, I can speak briefly to the Bayfront Parkway. The reason why the conversations of transferring Bayfront Parkway from the state to the city have even developed is that as we were developing the scope of work with the architecture firm selected by the design committee, was that how much actually physical space do we have to play with in terms of the Baywalk project? That would the project extend more onto land, would it extend more into water? All of these things affect the design, the cost, the potential budget. That is, is there more of a boardwalk system out into the bay, or would we perhaps do a road diet and have more of a bicycle pedestrian path that exists where the southern lane of Bayfront Parkway is now? It's just that these issues began to come up, and that's why we're exploring it. Thank you.
And now, I'd like to go ahead and comment as Chair, after everyone else has offered their comments. As Ryan pointed out, we, as members of the CRA, we are overseeing, or we're stewards of some multiple properties, and obviously, numerous leases and agreements that are two-party agreements, we've got certain performance expectations and mandates, as do our tenants and users, so that requires a constant management oversight role, which Ryan is doing right now. I want to remind all of us that we have aging infrastructure, we have aging buildings, not only, as was referenced with the South Palafox building that currently has the wine, the world of wine, and also play, but our, all of our bulkheads, the cathodic protection, which is necessary to inhibit the corrosion of metal on all of our, I don't know how many linear feet of bulkheads, miles we have, actually, I want to get that data, but that is an issue that has, we cannot ignore, we've got to get our arms around what is necessary to properly protect all of our bulkheads, especially as we provide more and more access for the public to enjoy in an unimpeded way, the waterfront. Finally, I'll just end on the added commentary about this Bayfront Parkway, and remind council, fellow council members, that Bayfront Parkway, as is configured post-Ivan, we do have the benefit of millions and millions of dollars of protection that was not there when Ivan hit. That was not at all a sort of bulk-headed, protected roadway, and in fact, DOT protected their investment by immediately putting in and incorporating a rather strong and not necessarily pedestrian-friendly stone bulkhead, but that was done and not at our cost, not on our dime. So, we do have a different parkway. Finally, there's a level of responsibility in this investigation about the Baywalk project, and that is, there's a fine line. Certainly, the experience of walking out over the water with some sort of piling constructed walkways is exciting, it's romantic, it gets us closer to the water. However, we have to recall then, every time we put structures in the water, we're also accepting that level of added, heightened level of vulnerability for storms. So, the balancing act right now is, in order to get closer to a complete streets experience, and I stress, I think some of what we're voting on is not actually how to create a complete street, but how to get closer to a complete street, may involve this sort of rethinking our level of ownership so that we can reconfigure some of our existing curbs and not put ourselves to a point of perhaps unreasonable risk with structures out in the water. So, there's many issues, and I just wanted to end on that. Now, thank you, Ryan, I think everyone else has commented, yes, Councilman Gerald, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have to bring this up, because I feel that if I don't, it wouldn't be brought up at all.
Okay.
But I want to point out that the CRA boundaries are from the A, from A Street on the west to 17th on the east, and from Cervantes on the north, south. And it appears to me, not a pier, it is, that all of the projects and the interests and the focus sounds as if it's from Garden Street south. And when we talk about gateways and entry, if everything focuses and shifts to the downtown Pensacola area, then that leaves that part of the CRA unattended and unprepared. So unless we, and I need to know if, I may, Mr. President, ask Ryan, if she is soliciting interests and projects from any of the residents along the A and Cervantes area moving down to Belmont de Villers, if those, as being a part of the CRA, what are we doing to improve those areas, blight and those kinds of things, and upgrading in those communities? How can we build a full, a fully addressed CRA district so that we don't have those pits and gaps within the CRA, because they have existed in the past, and now, obviously, they still consist, they exist now? What are we doing as a CRA to address, if we started from the starting point of A and Cervantes going east and going south, what projects, what's on the table for the development or redevelopment of those areas?
Chairman, thank you. Currently, I don't believe there are any projects in the works right now for the Belmont de Villers neighborhood. Of course, we did the streetscaping project in 2006, I believe, which was an extensive streetscape improvement on the intersection of Belmont and de Villers Streets. One of those problem businesses I am working with the neighborhood on unfortunately happens to be in that neighborhood, so that's not exactly the most positive project that's happening. But I'm also trying to stay involved with the Downtown Improvement Board, they are in works to develop, I believe, a recommendation to the City Council to develop an infill housing policy, so that's something that may benefit Belmont de Villers very well. When I was with the Planning Department, we had explored the possibility of either some rezonings and some land development code amendments to the permitted uses in some of those neighborhoods, based upon some of their comments. So, there's not anything immediately on my timeline for Belmont de Villers, but that's certainly something that through the Mayor's Urban Redevelopment Advisory Committee, they may recommend. The neighborhood has definitely been a topic of discussion amongst the committee members with the cultural, historic, and music history in that community.
Well, perhaps I should ask the question a different way. What needs have been identified, because I do know that there are some dilapidated properties and some things that need to be addressed, but it appears that once you leave the Cervantes area and until you get to Garden Street, there seems to be little activity in terms of the development and the upgrading of that part of the CRA. And if you're going to look at it as a CRA district, I would think that development should be going on throughout that district in order to make it what we keep referring to it as, as a CRA district. But if I were to leave here today as a member of the audience, it would be my opinion that everything that the CRA does focuses on the downtown area and forgets about that area north of Garden Street, west to A, and south, so.
That's certainly something that we can explore further at the Mayor's office.
Okay, then, you know, and even, and you mentioned the urban development team that's been assembled, I just don't see very much activity going on north of Garden Street, other than the trees that were planted, but there are some other needs within that district that are simply not being addressed.
Sure.
And I believe, before we put any money in Bayfront Parkway or trying to assume responsibility for that, it's important that we invest in the northern portion of the CRA district, because if the A and Cervantes is the gateway, that's the entry point to the CRA, we would want the CRA to look effective throughout and not be concentrated in one area while the others are being neglected, and it still looks the same way.
Sure, yeah, CRA is not just a commercial area, it is also
Exactly.
Home to many neighborhoods, both newer and older, with a variety of demographics, so I would be very interested in hearing your recommendations.
I don't understand why I have to keep bringing this up. I mean, hell, we see the CRA every day when you drive through, but we see what's going on.
Councilman Gerald, may I let Councilwoman Townsend speak, and then I'm gonna speak, and hopefully, I can shed some light on your very
If I need to be enlightened, please enlighten me.
Your very earnest and valid comments.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think that, it's been coming upon us as CRA to establish priorities, and if we have that listed, and it's obviously, as Councilman Gerald has indicated, there is a void, there is exactly a void in CRA targets, and has been for some time. We really need to look at it, because we are the CRA, this advisory board isn't just what they are in advisory board, but we are CRA in terms of establishing priorities as to what we would like to see done within the CRA district. Until somebody else say that we aren't, I think we should accept our responsibility. So, there is a void, and all of us can see it, so we probably need to look at some of those items that we are addressing, and to see whether we have left out any that we should be addressing. CRA has some strong obligations, financial obligation, so we know that we're going to have to twinkle and tickle and do everything we can to get some things accomplished, but to just leave certain parts of the CRA just totally absent is something that I don't think we should even think about entertaining. Thank you.
Right, thank you. I am, I'm hoping that Councilman Gerald, you and fellow CRA members, as well as people that are, have shown a history of interest in neighborhoods that are in the CRA that don't seem to make what I would call the poster list, will be encouraged within a few months, if not two to three months, with the Urban Redevelopment Advisory Committee's recommendations, and most importantly, the, their priorities. And Councilman Gerald, I was invited to be a guest speaker Friday, and I, perhaps I surprised some of the people that attended, and my presentation intentionally stayed away from the coastline, so to speak, and some of the urban core that has been so remarkably transformed. I did show some images of areas that are otherwise easy to ignore or forget, because human nature tends to push us in a direction where we look to where we're, we are, I guess, showing that we are winning versus losing, and there were good responses on that from the committee. And finally, I want to tell you that every one of those committee members are assigned individual areas in the CRA, and they have been tasked with the responsibility to provide the, and prioritize the responsibilities within their assigned areas, and not one area within the CRA has been neglected in that assignment. Yes, Councilwoman Myers?
Thank you. And I want to say that I did have the privilege of listening to Councilman Spencer's presentation to the UAC, that's the Mayor's Urban Redevelopment Advisory Committee, excellent presentation. But I do share the concerns of Councilman Gerald and Councilman Townsend, and I do want to remind us that the Mayor's Urban Redevelopment Advisory Committee is not an advisory committee of the CRA. We were not consulted about the establishment of that advisory committee, the mayor doesn't need to consult us, it's his advisory committee, and it's, but it's incumbent upon us to decide what the priorities are, not the mayor's advisory committees. I welcome their input, and, but ultimately, it is our responsibility, and I do share the concerns that you have expressed, Councilman Townsend and Councilman Gerald, and I think that's something we need to look at.
Thank you. All right. So, that concludes our discussion on CRA projects, activities, and operations. Any information items? New business? If not, all right, this meeting is adjourned.
Excuse me, Mr. Spencer, you had a public input request?
You know what, Ms. Dubusson, I have a bright pink card in my stack, and I certainly apologize.
Thank you, this is about the third time it's happened, so I'm just gonna stick up.
Well, please don't take it personally, and Mr. Salas had turned in a card on the conversion of the Bayland Street, which we have voted on, and so, may I unadjourn?
Sure.
All right, I don't think, and reconvene, I apologize, Ms. Dubusson, and you know I did not do that intention.
I'm not going to take it personal, and I do know you were eager to move into the rest of the stuff, but I did want to rise and speak this But I did want to rise and speak this evening concerning the CRA, the frequency of your meetings, and the input from the citizenship. There are a number of projects that individuals have undertaken because the CRA has had its hands full with dealing with funding and changing mechanisms and all of this. But one of the things that came up at a citizen meeting regarded bike racks and the need for bike racks with this increased focus on bike racks, I mean bicycling downtown. And with the parking meters being removed, we will have fewer posts to which bikes can be chained. There was a group that made a proposal for a contest, a competition, that would have had artistic bike racks being created and would have had some of them being funded by outside funders. However, that project was stopped because a statement was made that the city was already buying bike racks. I would like for the CRA to clarify whether there has been a purchase order given for bike racks, and if not, to encourage the group that had come up with this very creative solution to please look at it because currently, we're using temporary parade route racks dragged out periodically for bike racks. And it's not pleasant. It's not even a safe situation, you know, for bikers when they're approaching it, and it's certainly not a permanent solution. The other thing that I would like to comment on is that trashcans are very obviously present down Palafox. One can walk a block, block and a half, find a trashcan. But if you walk the entire length of Spring, there's not one single trashcan. We have pushed Spring Street, being the main entrance to the Maritime Park, and I can tell you as a citizen who walks that every single day that there are four to five trashbags of trash that I personally pick up and others are picking up as well, and it is not a pleasant viewing sight for the community. The third thing is to share good news of the CRA. I'm often accused of being a naysayer, and I only bring these things up so that we can move forward. And I would like to point out that private citizens have created two new business opportunities in the middle of Belmont de Villiers, the area that has been improved. One is a restaurant. The other is the pedestrian, the bike taxi, pedicab service. We as well have three new artisans who have moved in down there so that Belmont de Villiers is moving forward despite the fact that the CRA has not recently had any money and despite the fact that the city has supported groups in moving elsewhere in the city. I hope you will be as enthusiastic in supporting others who want to move into Belmont de Villiers when the opportunities come up. And I would ask you that as you look at the designs for all of the sidewalk enhancements, that you really rethink the individual brick linings which you put into Belmont de Villiers because after every rain, we have washing out of the sand compacting. And I've mentioned this a couple of times before, people do trip on the depressions that are created because it's not a permanent walkable service. I appreciate you letting me speak, Mr. Spencer. Thank you.
You bet. And I apologize again. Thanks for ending that on a very positive note. Meeting adjourned. Again. Can you just give us a second here to let everybody get situated?
Thank you for coming.
I can tell you in like thirty minutes.
Wanted for the day or?
Well, I could probably...
I did.
They're good.
She's got it, okay?
I saw, I saw, I saw.
I have too many Gmail accounts.
Have an...
I posed a question to them about a month or two ago about sort of...
It's a very odd question. The business store, they have entries that is a little higher.
I had brought up years and years in the past, a pretty great...
I mean, those little things, I can't really, but it was just brought up.
I will. Because I think I stumped our contractor. I stumped our contractor.
In car construction, anything that could be public or...
Oh, a lot of...
My daughter's a true...
This one, we...
You never see it all or something.
Let me know.
He's a good man.
Kind of a patient of ours, I think. I don't know how good of a man he is, but I just wanted to say hi since I recognize you from the ballgames down there.
Welcome to everyone for the committee at the whole. We've got a really, really long schedule today. I just ask you that you be patient. I'm with us. First part of the meeting, it's the Boyd Forum, where you get one minute to compliment, criticize what the city is doing, not doing, or bring up an item for us to discuss later on in the meeting to put on a future agenda. I have one card here, by the way, the yellow cards in the back. If you just fill those out if you want to speak during the Boyd Forum and hand them to the clerk. Mr. Brett Wyndham.
Hey, how you doing? I just, we were concerned with some stuff going on with the union that was brought in and we're not able to be in it. And we wrote a letter and I'm just going to read it to y'all, and we had one sent to y'all. But I'll read. "As we understand, there is a Ask Me proposal you will be making a decision about that includes changes to the pension. As non-union general employees, we feel that some of our benefits are being negotiated away by this union. This is a union we were not allowed to join, so we don't have a voice in this process, but the results will affect us significantly. Nearly thirty-seven percent of the members of the union will not be affected negatively by these changes. They will, however, receive the proposed ten percent raise over the next three years. How can non-affected employees have such a significant impact on active non-union general pension employees? And we understand there's five items that will affect the pension. It's reduce the pension multiplier from two point one to one point seven five, reduce the number of overtime hours for base wage calculation from three hundred to two hundred, decrease the spousal benefit to more closely mirror the Florida retirement system, current final average salary of best two years out of the last five, change to average five out of the last five. Pension cost of living adjustment COLA reduced from one point five to one per based year, per year based on an increase in consumer price. And same as now, no COLA for FRS hires after seven one, two thousand and eleven." And then, "All decreases are significant, especially when using FRS as a benchmark. FRS employees may have a lower benefit as compared to general pension, but they get that benefit in addition to social security, which general pension participants do not pay. If a married FRS participant expired, their spouse has the potential for two benefits, spousal FRS and social security. The general pension spouse would receive spousal benefit from general pension only. General pension benefits have been affected greatly over the last several years. Not receiving a step increase not only affects our paychecks, it lessens our general pension amount. That is also true of the overtime cap, which Ask Me proposes to lower to two hundred hours. Again, thirty-seven percent of the Ask Me members will not pay that price. And in two thousand and seven, employees were given the choice to join FRS or remain in general pensions. Meetings were held to provide employees information. In one such meeting, the city attorney, Rusty Wells, was asked, 'Once the general pension is closed, can the city make changes?'" His answer was, "Once the, was that, 'Once the general pension was closed, it cannot be changed. Employees based nonrevocable decisions based upon this information. Now that we, now we feel that we were misled. As employees, we cannot trust and believe what our city attorney tells us. Who can we trust? Over the past several years of economic challenges, employees have understood the struggles the city faced. We hope our acceptance of doing more with less demonstrated our spirit of cooperation. We are all dedicated employees who like working for the city and try our best to represent the city favorably.'"
Mr. Wyndham? I need you to just start wrapping it up. We all got that in the email today, and I really do need to cut you short. I know the basic point that you're trying to make is that you've got union employees negotiating the future of non-union employees.
Yes, and that was our main concern.
Yeah, right. And I understand that, and we discussed that now at the Sunshine meeting that we had last week. I'm not free to discuss that with you now, but the council members did bring up that concerned themselves.
Okay. Yeah, that was our main one, that the FRS employees were negotiating our stuff and they had no, they were going to be affected by it unless it was a gain for them. Okay. Thank you, though.
Okay. And if you want to stay for the discussion item later on, you're welcome to do that. But I do need to move on to the other people in the Boyd Forum.
Okay. All right. Thanks, sir.
Can we talk about it during the discussion?
I don't want to debate. I just wanted to make a request.
Okay.
That that letter be officially addressed by Mr. Messer and also the negotiating team, the pension, because there's some concerns in that about it being reopened and changed. So, I'd like it addressed officially because I'm concerned about that matter.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, if you may, I'll defer that to the Mayor's office.
That's fine.
The city attorney's not involved in this. That doesn't make it good or bad. It's just that I'd prefer them to do it since they have the background.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. What, I just, yeah. Okay. Mr. Darling, I see that you've turned in a thing to talk about the chicken issue, but that's on the agenda later. So, I just ask that...
If I may, if I may, I keep very, very... Yes, I'm here to support backyard chicken keeping in Pensacola. And, but I'm also in support of a fair and open discussion in determining how that will be allowed and codified. And the only other point I wish to make is this. Depending on the outcome of today's discussion, I would ask that the city, be it the mayor, the council, or code enforcement, in an act of good faith, issue a moratorium on any action regarding the current chicken ordinance, except in the most extreme cases. And I thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. Ms. Juanita Carter.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to what the lady is saying, I can speak on, not what I heard or saw on television, I actually went to the site at Eleventh and Fisher. And what I'm going to recommend or request is that we have engineering and public works reevaluate or evaluate the new drainage system that was installed about a year and a half ago. And it appears to me, it was obvious, that the amount of water that has been diverted to that holding pond is overwhelming for the size of the pond itself. So, if we can have the engineers and public works reevaluate that, and I believe it was also a part of a DOT project that started at Tuhar and Ninth Avenue, and Bars and Ninth Avenue, but the amount of water that's flowing to that particular holding pond is overwhelming to that pond, and it created at least three to four feet of water. And we actually stood around and watched it happen. So, if we can get someone, and you mentioned you're going to have someone talk about that a little bit later on the agenda, but as I indicated, it appears to me that the diversion of water to that pond is overwhelming. And this will continue to happen whether it's a rain like on Saturday or a normal rain. And it gets to the point where I think it's very frustrating to people to tell them that there is no help available and that it was an act of God. And we all know where rain comes from. So, that, to me, is not a legitimate excuse, but God didn't build a pond. So, that, and divert that water into that particular low-lying area. So, if we can get our public works and engineering people to take a look at it, and if they need any, if they have any questions, they can certainly call me. But it floods frequently, rapidly, depending on the amount of rain.
Well, let's do, let's just bring that up during the discussion item later on. And I haven't talked to Mr. Owens, but I bet by looking at the amount of problem that we had over the weekend, that you're probably going to hear something like a hundred-year storm happened on Saturday. That, and that was, it's the second time that it's happened in seven years here, but I'm going to bet that was a hundred-year storm on Saturday.
So, then every time you have a hundred-year storm, they lose property and suffer damage. But it is the pond that is causing the problem. It overflows and the water has no place else to go.
Right.
It's like a toilet backing up.
Right. All right. We'll talk about that later. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just real quick, Mr. President, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Gerald. We'll certainly take a look at that, as we will, some other areas that we saw some increased issues with in the last couple of days. I think it is important to stress to everyone and make sure that everybody understands, though, that the storm that you saw in the last couple of days, almost all of what we have in the ground for our stormwater system was overcome by this particular storm. This is something out of the ordinary. It was not, you know, it was the second-largest amount of rainfall that we've received in the time period here in Pensacola. And this stuff is simply not engineered for those kinds of storms. You know, you could, you can always make the argument, "Well, why aren't they?" Traditionally, what you do, and this is something I was going to bring up a little bit later, traditionally what you do is it's a cost-benefit analysis, and ultimately, what you try to do is somewhere between eighty and ninety-five percent of the storms you engineer for. Obviously, if you're engineering for those bigger storms, the scope of the project increases and so doesn't the cost. So, but both Mr. Owens and Mr. Garza will be here a little bit later in the discussion portion to talk a little bit about where we are in our current analysis of what happened in the last couple of days and also be available for you to ask questions. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Mr. Tom Garner, you're also wanting to speak to chickens. Would you just want to reserve those comments for our discussion?
Yeah, we weren't sure whether that would be an opportunity.
There will be.
We just wanted to say we're here to ask you questions and asking for considering the issue.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And Mr. Gary Sansing. I know the economy's in the tank.
Gary Sansing, fifteen seventeen East Jackson, citizen of the city and county CRA. I enjoyed the discussion so far, but there's a few things that's got left out. One is, in the CRA, any public building, there should be a public toilet, you know? That I hear from citizens. And, Ms. Prack, you're right, the economy. I mean, over the weekend, I listened to a lot of things, get a lot of phone calls. And don't forget, we are in a crisis, the country. Now, we got big dreams that we cannot fulfill. I mean, we got to start being priority and think about what we can achieve.
It overflows, and the water has no place else to go.
Right.
It's like a toilet backing up.
Right, all right. We'll talk about that later, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just real quick, Mr. President, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Gerald. We'll certainly take a look at that, as we will, some other areas that we saw some increased issues with in the last couple of days. I think it is important to stress to everyone and make sure that everybody understands, though, that the storm that you saw in the last couple of days, almost all of what we have in the ground for our stormwater system was overcome by this particular storm. This is something out of the ordinary. It was not, you know, it was the second-largest amount of rainfall that we've received in the time period here in Pensacola. And this stuff is simply not engineered for those kinds of storms. You know, you could, you could, you can always make the argument, well, why aren't they? Traditionally, what you do, and this is something I was going to bring up a little bit later, traditionally what you do is it's a cost-benefit analysis, and ultimately what you try to do is somewhere between 80 and 95 percent of the storms you engineer for. Obviously, if you're engineering for those bigger storms, the scope of the project increases, and so doesn't the cost. So, but both Mr. Owens and Mr. Garza will be here a little bit later in the discussion portion to talk a little bit about where we are in our current analysis of what happened in the last couple of days, and also be available for you to ask questions. Thank you, sir.
Okay, good, thank you. Mr. Tom Garner, you're also wanting to speak to chickens. Would you just want to reserve those comments for our discussion?
Yeah, we weren't sure whether that would be an opportunity.
There will be.
We just wanted to say we're here to answer your questions and asking for considering the issue.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Mr. Gary Sansing. I know the economy's in the tank.
Gary Sansing, 1517 East Jackson, citizen of the city and county CRA. I enjoyed the discussion so far, but there's a few things that's got left out. One is, in the CRA, any public building, there should be a public toilet, you know? That I hear from citizens. And, Ms. Pratt, you're right, the economy. I mean, over the weekend, I listened to a lot of things, get a lot of phone calls. And don't forget, we are in a crisis, the country. Now, we got big dreams that we cannot fulfill. I mean, we got to start being priority and think about what we can achieve. And the thing that really bothers me the most is our First Amendment. I don't know how long this is, this void forum is limited to, but that last special meeting that we had downstairs, Mr. Townsend chaired it, and several of our council people were absent. I know someone had excused themselves, but this was something we've been after for a long time, is get staff. You got to allow more time for public input, even special meetings at your Blue Ribbon Committees or anything that you set up. You got to have it. If you don't, you're going to have trouble on our hands, and it will get worse. The economy, we're going to suffer, at the minimum, five years. Unemployment, they're lying to you, you got spends on both sides. Okay, Sam, you want me to cut it short, but what is the amount of time given to the public? You're going to have to do something about this, and I will, I'm in support of the chickens, because we're going to, well, enough said for the moment.
Okay, all right.
I'll cut it short. Thank you. Thank you all. Dr. Pratt is right on. The economy's stupid.
Dr. Pratt and I just sound alike, that's all. So we're going to move on to council actions. We've got four sets of appointments that we have to do. Mr. Johnson, distinguished gentleman from District Four.
Thank you very much. I guess we're going to talk about the two appointments at the parking wreck. Can we take one vote first, and then see who has been voted in, and then take them off of our second list? Is that appropriate? Is that way of directing your comments to me?
That's the reason I was...
Is that acceptable, Mr. Lawyer?
Well, we may have some issues with Ms. Dubusson on that, taking things out of order, so, but that would be fine with me, if we did that, did it as two separate votes.
Yeah, I think so, because if we...
I know you're looking at Mr. Myslak, that's on there in both places.
Mr. Epstein's there twice, and Ms. Myers is there twice, so I think we should vote on one, and then who's selected, take them off the second list if appropriate.
Sounds good to me, then. Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to ask our city attorney very quickly. Mr. Myslak is nominated to serve on our Parks and Recreation Board. He also serves on the Mayor's Urban Redevelopment Advisory Board. That's not a conflict, is it?
No, ma'am, I don't believe it is. Those are both advisory boards.
Okay.
They're not decision-making boards.
Someone had raised that issue, and I just wanted it on the record that you've given it your blessings.
Yes, ma'am. For those of you who think I shoot from the hip, I assure you, I'm besieged by information before these meetings, so I'm prepared.
Okay, I thought you would be. Thank you.
Okay, so on, when we get around to doing the Parks and Recreation Board, we'll do it in two separate votes. But the first one is appointment to the West Florida Public Library Board. Ms. Betty Hooton, an incumbent, is the only nominee. I recommend that we nominate her by acclamation.
Second.
Okay, so who's making the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Move by acclamation.
Okay, gotcha. So we, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Hooton, and thank you for serving again. Okay, now we're to the 2013 position for the Parks and Recreation Board, and the first person is Mr. Paul, this is for the 2013, yes. Mr. Spencer, you nominated Paul Epstein.
Yes, I did, thank you. I know that Mr. Epstein is here, and I invite him to introduce himself to the council members, and would like to actually point out that perhaps eye contact should be directed to three council members that didn't nominate any nominees. There's really only three council members that I think aren't committed, unless some council members have changed their minds after they've nominated someone. So anyway, I am certainly confident, since I nominated Mr. Epstein, he is, has provided our community with countless opportunities and learning events, most, team-building. He has just been the face of running in the Pensacola community, and I look forward to having him introduce himself personally to all of you.
Thanks, Councilman Spencer, and good afternoon, councilwomen and councilmen. Thank you all for your service to our city as well. And I don't say that to sort of request your consideration for my nomination, but I sort of do. And I want to stay very brief, but I sent you all a letter last week. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review it. I'm not going to go into details, but I just want to say that I've lived in the city for over 14 years and have owned a business, operated a business successfully in the realm of athletic footwear apparel, accessories, coaching men, women, and children in the art of running and walking in the city as well. And I've directed dozens, tens of dozens of events using city facilities, using roads, all 90% of them within the city. So I have a very unique perspective in sort of my experience in dealing with the public, seeking their input in terms of facilities and events, and then dealing with city staff as well, and utilizing the city's resources to their best, keeping them within my budget, and also maintaining the integrity of the city's resources. And so I would truly appreciate your positive vote in my appointment today. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, sir. Dr. Wu, you nominated Ms. Lindsay Myers.
Yes, and before I talk about Ms. Myers, I also want to, regardless of how the outcome comes out, thank Mr. Epstein for all his involvement in the city. My dilemma was that I got caught by two people before Mr. Epstein contacted me, but it does not detract from what I think he has contributed over time to the city. I was contacted by Lindsay Meyer and asked would I nominate her, and I was glad, after looking at her record, to do so. She currently works for Catholic charity, graduated from Florida State, and has a background in working in recreation and leisure. What especially piqued my instance, interest is she said that she has a special interest in after-school activities for low-income children. So I felt like, based on the fact that her heart's in the right place, the fact that she has some experience in working with recreation, that she would make an excellent candidate. So I'm glad to put her forth.
Is Ms. Myers here?
She had a conference out of town, I believe.
All right, thank you. And, Mr. Johnson, you nominated John Myslak.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Myslak, as many of us know, has served on some advisory committees here for the mayor. I have nominated him for this Park and Wrecks. Mr. Myslak is a father here that's been involved in the program. The baseball program here has a very extensive knowledge of that operation, has, to my pleasure, has offered his time to serve this city. And as we know, Mr. Myslak, he does his homework, he's diligent and informed when he makes his decisions. I think he would be an excellent choice for this particular board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize about adding the extra syllable to your name. Your sons correct me on that every time I say Myslak, and so, yes, Ms. Myers?
I would like to speak on behalf of Mr. Myslak also. I see him during baseball practice season, every Friday in the park, playing ball with his son. And that really impresses me, when a parent takes the time that he takes to participate with his children to the extent that he does. So I think that he really cares about our parks and our children, and I think he would make a really good representative on this board.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Oh, yes, Ms. Deweese.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I also support Mr. Myslak. I actually had nominated him for the longer term, but he is a constituent of mine, and I've been working directly with him on some issues and concerns that affect us all as councilpeople for the citizens of the city with regard to access to league play. And he has worked very hard on that. He's a very determined person, and will go investigate any issue, and has some wonderful ideas for how we do improve that access, and is very engaged in the successes in our city. So I urge you to support him as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, Ms. Deweese, you and Mr. Gerald nominated Charlie Nichols.
He's in the audience, do we want him?
Mr. Myslak.
Mr. Myslak, did you care to speak? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President, and councilmembers, and thank you, councilmembers, for the kind words. I appreciate that. I'll be very brief. I mean, I'm very flattered by what was said. I'm very privileged and honored to be nominated and considered. It is true, I'm a baseball coach, a very dedicated and passionate baseball coach, as Ms. Myers sees. That activity, though, gets me around to a lot of the facilities in the city, and I'm able to see what's going on out there, and what the maintenance conditions are like, et cetera. But more importantly, my passion these days has been access to activities, guaranteeing maximized access for the citizens to certain activities that are being performed by organizations that are using taxpayer-funded facilities. That's at the forefront of my, you know, efforts these days, and I'm very passionate about it, and I hope to participate at Parks and Wrecks. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. And, Ms. Deweese, you and Mr. Gerald nominated Charlie Nichols.
Yes, Mr. Nichols had actually filled out a willingness-to-serve form back in February, I believe, or maybe even December. But he is a constituent of mine, and it came to my attention when we had an opportunity to review these. He has been a resident for over 50 years in our city, and was an administrator in the school district for 30 years, and early in his career, had had a partnership with a program here at the city for youth. But with the departure of Horace Jones, I'm very concerned about the minority representation on the board, and I feel like Mr. Nichols would be a perfect addition to the Parks and Recreation Board with his experience with children as well.
Is Mr. Nichols here?
He's traveling.
And then, Dr. Pratt, you nominated...
Wait a minute. Yes, I did. Mr. President, hold on. I also recommended Mr. Charlie Nichols as a fellow coworker, as an educator, and as indicated a moment ago, he has extensive experience with children. And on each of his campuses, they conducted programs of athletics for children, playgrounds, et cetera. Not only does he have experience with children, but he also has experience with the community, as he can communicate very extremely well with parents and others who bring children to our Parks and Recreation facilities. And I must say that this is an impressive list of individuals who are willing to serve. I know a couple of them on the list, and it's going to be a hard draw, but hopefully we'll get through it. But it's an impressive list, and I would ask for the council's support for Mr. Charlie Nichols. He would be a wonderful addition to the Parks and Recreation Board. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, sir. Dr. Pratt, you nominated Dr. Cilla Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I nominated Mrs. Thomas, or Dr. Thomas. She has contacted me previously about boards. She's very eager to serve this city, and her background is, she does academic advisor education department at Pensacola State, and with her experience with education, I thought that that would be a good addition to our Parks and Wrecks because of the resource centers coming as part of it, and the tie-in between recreation and education. And she is here, and I think she'd enjoy speaking.
Dr. Thomas?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you, Ms. Pratt, for giving me this opportunity as well. This would be a new venue for me. I just look for the opportunity to serve the city of Pensacola. My husband and I are military, and as we moved back, Dr. Wu was my instructor, as I went through the doctoral program at the University of West Florida. And again, I'm just looking for the opportunity to serve, so if I don't get selected this time, just remember my name, because you'll see my face again, and you'll hear my name, and I think you have a strong pool of candidates there, so I look forward to this opportunity. Thank you all, have a great day.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Yes, sir.
The issue of minority representation was brought up by Councilwoman Deweese, and we also have some obligation on the Title IX that relates to sports activities that relates to females. So, and looking at our list, we have a void of any females on this list, so I just wanted to throw that out, so you'll know what our obligations are that relates to these kind of boards, and make sure that we have inclusion in all of them.
Okay. Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
Are we just voting on the 2013?
Yes, ma'am, right now, the 2013, then. We'll move on to some of the other races and then come back to the 2014.
Okay, thank you.
Results of that.
Did you tear your page? You need your...
Okay, please vote.
We can, if you want to take a break in the meeting while they're...
Let's just keep going, we'll come back. Keep going.
That's what I was...
Okay, then immediately get back on.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, you nominated David Collins.
Yes, thank you very much, and I was under the impression that he was the only nominee for that. I believe that somehow we had another one added later. I'm not sure if they, how that happened, but I know both of these persons and have faith in both of them. But Mr. Collins is a local person here. He owns a small business here. Actually, it's a pretty big business in real estate, online real estate, has an extensive knowledge of real estate. I actually, for the sake of full disclosure, I took my real estate license course from him, and his extensive knowledge of real estate in every regard is, I think, unsurpassed. And I think that he would be a great addition. He recently moved to downtown Pensacola. His office is in downtown Pensacola, and I'm just real delighted that he's stepped forward and offered to serve on this Environmental Advisory Board. Thank you.
Do you know if he's in the audience?
I believe he's out of town today. Thank you.
All right. And then, Ms. Myers, you nominated Ms. Gutierrez.
I think the Environmental Advisory Board is extremely important. I was out during the rain, Saturday and Sunday, taking pictures of Carpenter Creek and some of our stormwater retention ponds, and the terrible amount of erosion that's flowing into Carpenter Creek. The council, back last year, directed the Environmental Advisory Board to look at the state of the water and sedimentation and so forth in Carpenter Creek. And this leads me into why I've nominated Mary Gutierrez. Carpenter Creek meanders throughout a large portion of our city. What happened... What happens in Carpenter Creek ultimately ends up in Bayou Tuhar. Mary Gutierrez has extensive knowledge regarding the conditions of Carpenter Creek. She has worked for DEP. She, until recently, worked for a number of years at the West Florida Regional Planning Council. Her specialty is environmental. She is presently working on a project with UWF, looking at the state of Carpenter Creek. I believe that we need someone on the Environmental Advisory Board who has the type of knowledge she has, particularly about water quality, Carpenter Creek, retention ponds, and so She does not live in the city. However, it says here in our summary, "To the extent practicable, members of the board shall be city residents." So even though she is not a city resident, she does have extensive knowledge regarding a very important environmental issue that affects a major body of water in this city. So I am urging the council to make an exception and to support her nomination for this very important board.
Thank you, Mr. President, and also Ms. Myers for your wonderful thoughts about Ms. Gutierrez. I do support her as well. I'm a little hurt that I didn't know she wanted to be nominated. I would have done so as well. I do want the council to know that although she doesn't live in the city, virtually all the work that I know she's done is within the city. Her knowledge on the Bay Area Resource Council, her efforts on the Scenic Highway Foundation, she's currently working on Oyster Reef Grant for In the Bay, she's working on an erosion control project for scenic bluffs. She is so knowledgeable in so many areas of our city that the value that is created by her work, I hope that you will, that will outweigh, if you have any concerns, that she's not a city resident, but I do support her completely. Thank you.
Is Ms. Gutierrez in the audience?
I don't believe she's here today.
Okay. You know, our policies on these boards don't really come with the weight of law on them, so we can waive the rules. What I want to do before we take a vote on this is somebody to move to waive the rules to allow her to serve on this board.
I'll make a motion.
It's not a rule that they have to be on the... It's recommended, but...
Recommended, okay. All right. Okay, fine. That's... Okay. Thanks, Ms. Myers. Yes, sir.
The other thing, Mr. President, too, is it appears that this wasn't received timely. Are we gonna waive that it wasn't received timely, or how does that work? Because if it doesn't, I'm gonna make sure that now that I don't get mine on time, and then just ask y'all to waive them, because I'm just curious how that works.
The policy of the clerk in recent months has been to accept them past the accepted timeline, and it's... I was having trouble remembering some of the trouble that the clerk had gotten into with some of the members of council by not accepting some that were later than normal. So that's been her policy, and I have supported her in that. Because I can tell you, out of all, since I've been president, out of all the board nominations that we've had, probably well over 50% of them have come in past the deadline. I was really impressed that we had as full a slate of candidates this time, because sometimes we only have the incumbents, you know, to choose from.
Well, it's just that I, you know, I followed the rules, got down here and moved some stuff around so that I could get here before noon on Friday, you know, to do that, and if we're not gonna play by the rules anywhere, it's fine with me. I'll just wait and see what the slate is when the deadline happens, and then if I'm not happy with some of the folks that are nominated, I'll just run down here and put another nomination in. Thanks.
Well, and I'll tell you what we'll do is, to our discussion items here at the end, I mean, if you want to make an affirmative...
I think we should. Either it's a rule or it's not.
Mr. President, point of order, just really quickly. I think we have a policy that you, as president, can accept nominations, delayed nominations, up to three days before the meeting, and I think it's articulated in our policies. She's holding it up.
Okay.
So it's unfortunate, I understand, but I came up against that as well.
All right. All right. Thank you, Madam President.
So clarification, so that's, policy is in print, and the eighth then meets the three-day prior to our meeting, correct?
Yes, the eighth, three days. It's, and it's not business days, three calendar days.
Not trying to put Councilwoman Myers at the end of my sights there, but I think definitely Councilman Johnson has some very valid points regarding strategy.
Well, let's just put that on the list for discussion, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And, yes, Mr. Gerald.
So does that mean, does that mean we don't have a rule, a deadline?
That's what...
This is what it really means.
That we can waive it, we can play around with it.
So, and Mr. Johnson, as Mr. Spencer has indicated, raises a valid question. So if that's the case, then forget about the deadline, and we'll just drop it off at our convenience.
All right. Okay. Page 16, item number 12 under Boards and Commissions. These are our policies right here, okay? All written nominations shall be filed with the clerk not later than three days prior to the meeting of the Committee of the Ho, which would always be a Friday. And so whatever the deadline is, the real deadline, as long as I'm president, or we affirmatively change this as part of our policies, is, yes, not later than three days prior to the meeting of the Committee of the Ho. And it says the Committee of the Ho may waive those provisions, but there's nothing to waive here because... Yeah, we've got the three days. So, anyway, and I allowed the clerk to accept that nomination, and so that stands, but we will discuss that later. So I forget to bring it up, Mr. Johnson. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. All right. All right. Now we're gonna vote.
I'm gonna bring up another future discussion point with regard to this, but it's not nearly as controversial. One of the requirements in that committee is a federal, state, local, environmental person, and I, in the nomination process, contacted someone I knew at EPA and said, "Hey, do any of you wanna participate?" And he let me know that they really are not allowed to do that because they would be regulating us, and I think it might be something we ought to look into in the constitution of this board. It'd be great to have them, but maybe if we can't have them because they would be regulating us, we might want to either eliminate or...
Bring that up in that same discussion.
And I'm just pointing that out for future discussion.
Yes, ma'am. Now, if this is about the decision on the boards, let's do that during the later part of the meeting. Right now, we're just trying to get these positions filled, okay?
I have something I want to put out.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca Hyer, I'm currently a member of the Environmental Advisory Board. I just wanted to bring up something, and not speaking in favor of any particular nominee, but some considerations that we have, the people that have been doing good work. We have an excellent board. We have very technically qualified people. We have some very committed people. But some of the things that we are looking for is, first of all, technical expertise, and the other thing is commitment to doing the work. We have had some attendance problems at meetings, so I know this kind of sounds mundane, but we need somebody who is willing and able to show up to meetings on a regular basis, and that, so I would ask you to consider that in making your selection. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Can we make it if they miss three meetings in a year or something that they're off the...
Well, let's make that for later. Right now, we're trying to get people in the board, on the board.
The board has actually discussed that at a meeting, and we are making a recommendation which will be presented to the council.
Ms. Hyer, yeah, let's discuss that later. Let's just get the people seated on the board. Thanks. All right. We have a tie on the Parks and Recreation Board between Mr. Charlie Nichols and Mr. John Meisler, and we're having some new ballots handed out now. And congratulations to Ms. Gutierrez.
How could we have a tie?
Because there were multiple other things. It was like a three, three, one, one, one.
Okay. Ms. Gutierrez has been appointed to Environmental Advisory Board. Just glad we're not making sauce each year. Well, that's being tabulated. On the Gateway Review Board, we have three nominees under property owners, Mr. Sergio Hernandez, Robert Montgomery, Bob Wilson, and we have three nominees under the architectural, engineering side of things, professions who do not own property within the district, and that's Wes Caldwell, Don Carlos, and Philip Partington. One's a building contractor, and the other two are architects. We get to do for three for those. Since there's only three nominees for each one of those, I'd recommend someone moving that we accept them by acclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Does anybody here want to speak in favor of any of the candidates? Okay? I'll... Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously. Now, yes, sir. Yeah, we gotta get to the bottom. You're right. And at the at-large, who does not own property in the district, Mr. Joseph W. C. Boils, and was it Mr. Johnson and Dr. Wu?
Yes, Mr. Boils is someone that I've known for a number of years, is a local attorney here in Pensacola, Florida, has a willingness to serve. He has been involved in some other local organizations here, and I can't find my notes at this time, so... But Mr. Boils is a young attorney here that was a willingness to serve, and I would highly recommend him. I've known this gentleman for 20-plus years. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Echoing Councilman Johnson's sentiments that I was contacted and asked to nominate Mr. Boils, I'm glad to do so. He's currently an attorney with Boils and Boils. He, at one time, served in the public defender's office. He was graduate of Birmingham Southern. He has quite a few boards that he serves on, Man of Food Bank, Navy League, and Alzheimer's. He was in the LEAP class in 2009, a member of Five Flags Rotary and St. Christopher's Episcopal Church. Mr. Boils is unable to be here today because a Man of Food Bank was flooded, and he's in the process of helping them relocate the food, so I'm more than happy to enter his name. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. And then, Ms. Dues, you nominated Mr. Schmitz, Eric Schmitz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and I just wanted to introduce you. I know Mr. Schmitz is in the audience, and a lot of us had the pleasure of meeting him during his campaign for mayor a few years ago, but he's an accomplished artist in our community, and I only bring up his wife because I want you to know how invested they are in this community. She actually works with the DIB and is responsible for some of the successes with the market downtown and the gallery night, but I think he would be a wonderful addition to the Gateway Review Board from the artistic standpoint. He's also very interested in renewables and green technology and that sort of thing, so he has his eyes on those as well. So I think he's in the audience.
Yes, yes, sir.
Even though I nominated someone else, I have to also commend Mr. Schmitz for putting his name in, since he and I go to the same church, and I'll have to see him every Sunday. I committed to another candidate prior, but I want to say I have very high praise for Mr. Schmitz as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Schmitz.
Yeah, I didn't know I was up against competition that goes to the same church as well, so that could cause some problems. A lot of you already know me, I'm Eric Schmitz, but I just want to speak quickly because I know, you know, time is, time is of the essence here, but I do have a fine arts background. I studied fine arts at Montclair State University, which is about 12 miles east of Manhattan in New Jersey. I'm very familiar with the eclectic array of styles that are present in the city of Pensacola, going back to the early colonial influences of England, and then the also Spanish Baroque influences, and the eclectic mix, which also includes some Gothic revival and Greek revival architecture. And I'm also a very well-versed in modernist and postmodern architecture, and I believe that I could be a good asset on this board, as I think the main goal is to create an overall aesthetic pleasing view to the city, which will then, I believe, help us to bring more businesses and create more jobs and create more, hopefully, residences in the downtown area. I live in East Hill on Cervantes near 19th, so even though I'm not within the district, I basically see it every day in my travels. So thank you, Maron, for the nomination, and I appreciate all of your consideration. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And there's Mr. Christian Wagley as the incumbent. Is Mr. Wagley here?
Yeah, I am. I was actually gonna take my name off. I wasn't sure how this was gonna work, and since there's so many incumbents that are all getting reelected, I would rather just have some change up, right? It gets good for the board, so I'm happy to take a step back and get some new people on there, so let's do that. The mayor's keeping up plenty busy on the urban redevelopment committee, so I'm happy to vote myself for that, so...
Okay. And thanks for your participation in that as well. Thank you, sir. Okay, so just cross off Mr. Wagley's name, vote for one. All right. And sign it. Make sure you sign it.
You have to have it in on time, though?
I was on time. I will say I took a picture of my nomination form and emailed it.
That's a good idea.
And then turned it in later, but I had to get it in. I do it electronically. On time for our president.
Okay.
I don't need to scan it, I just have the electronic print of my signature.
Now, we're gonna have to do the vote on the Parks and Rec Board again. Two people did not sign their ballot.
Oh, Lord.
And one didn't turn it in. So we have to redo that vote all over again.
So what? Would have been the outcome?
Well, then let's just sign it.
Of those who did turn in the votes, because I guess you can sort of do it like a headbutt in a fight, who has the most votes at the, at certain point in the game, that's the person. I'm pretty sure I signed mine, though.
I don't know if I signed mine or not.
Well, who didn't sign? Let's just sign them.
Either that, or we take the ones that are signed.
Just take the ones that are signed.
We're switching rules and stuff around.
That's right.
Do you have any objection of taking the vote just as it turned out?
I do.
You do? All right, if there's even one that's got an objection, we'll do the vote over again. Okay?
I want to make sure my votes counted, and I can't remember if I signed it.
This is the new one, sorry. I didn't mean for you to see that. I remember. It's the next one.
It's gonna be here till midnight tonight.
Okay.
It'll be a long time till our next meeting.
Mr. President, may I suggest everyone sign their form before they vote?
Thank you. All right. So the choices begin between Mr. Meisler and Charlie Nichols on the term expiring in 2013. All right.
No, he's that's switched over.
He's on the mayor's.
And this is the easy part of the meeting.
She's coming. She's not here yet. Don't worry.
Sign it.
I messed up on my signature last time, so I know I did.
Yeah, you got two. Did everybody sign? Everybody did sign. Okay. You have to get it in on time.
How about we go through the next group, and then there are more nominees who we haven't talked about.
Well, the only thing that I've got left is the 2014.
Right, but we already know about the two that are on there, so why don't we say whether we like them, what we like about them?
Hear from them.
And then we're ready to vote when they're ready to run.
Okay. Well, we already know about Mr. Epstein, Lindsey Myers, John Myslak, and Charlie Nichols. We've not talked about John Chandler or Jeff Benjamin. Dr. Pratt on?
Mr. Benjamin contacted me with his interest. He has a background in physical education, and he now works for Pensacola State, and he grew up here and is eager to serve on this board and advance recreation.
Okay. And is Mr. Benjamin in the audience? Mr. Townsend, you nominated John Chandler.
Thank you, Mr. President. As indicated in the write-up that you have in front of you, he's been a strong leader and advocate for youth and adult sports in Pensacola. He's actually one of the founders of the Southern Youth Sports Association, which is out in Legion Field and part of the McGee Field Organization. He has worked with a lot of the players and former players here in the city. He sponsors and is supporter of recreation here in the city. He's a senior assistant analyst at Baptist Hospital, and he is just willing to serve, and I think he'd be a good addition to this park or board.
Okay. And thank you, sir. Is Mr. Chandler here?
I will take his.
All right.
We need to wait until...
We see who we don't...
Who got voted off behind them.
Can we get Councilmember Townsend to move his microphone? It's kind of hard to hear.
I had it blocked.
There you go.
Well, I can't do that.
Congratulations, Mr. Myslak. Okay, now, scratch Mr. Myslak's name from the list below and vote for one.
You didn't keep your half?
Yeah, we didn't hear it.
I tore it. Okay. Yeah, someone's fine.
And please sign.
Sign it. I'm watching.
Keep it straight.
I think just because you don't run doesn't mean you should hold it against them.
And while we wait for the tally on that, I want to bring up something. I just happened to notice later into the meeting that we have two persons there from Salt Marsh, Cleveland, and Goon sitting out there. There was an item later on in the agenda that was supposed to be discussed. I'm sorry that I was unable to get to you earlier about this, but that item has been pulled for today. So you have my apologies on that, sir. Okay?
Thank you. It's been enjoyable.
Yeah, okay. Some comedy relief here, I know. Okay? Okay. This moves us to the mayor's report. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Here's the second. Let's go to the next.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next thing on our agenda is subject Airport Financing Extension Rental Car Service Facility. The recommendation is that City Council approve the attached resolution for the reissuance and modification of the terms of the existing loan from Bank of America NA, which financed the airport Reynolds Car Service Facility construction in 2008, including establishing a December 31, 2015 maturity date and a new reduced loan amount of $11,800,000. Also authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transaction, and finally approve the supplemental budget resolution for pay down of $3 million in principal.
Move the approval.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Mr. Gerald and Dr. Wu. Madam Clerk, do you need us to... Pardon? I'm sorry.
She said it'd be helpful if you spoke.
Okay. Go ahead. Okay, good. All right. And we have a presentation. Is that right?
We have Mr. Barker here that can explain the intricacies of the deal. Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Barker?
Thank you, Council President. I have with me Richard Lott, the city's bond attorney, and Mitch Owens, the city's financial advisor. And we have been before you with this loan before. It's very positive that we move forward and the pay down of the $3 million and continue the same terms for the airport. And this will be through December 2015, this particular loan.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, comments? Ms. Myers?
Yes, I have a few. What is the benefit to the city of paying the $3 million in principal and refinancing the loan?
The major reason for this, when we started this loan, Ms. Myers, is that it was so we do not have to go through fixed financing. The fixed rates are higher than the variable rates, and they've been very positive since the terms of the agreement. And certainly Mitch or Richard, do you have any other comments? Just add into it.
Thank you, Dick. Mr. Chair, basically, the positive interest rate we're getting, which is a LIBOR, which is a floating rate interest, plus 75 basis points, allows us to pay an interest rate of approximately 1% right now, which, as Mr. Barker says, is considerably lower than we would get for the car facilities charge financing in an open public market, as well as the fact is we do not have to issue any type of ratings, and the bonds are standalone on their own credit. So it's a positive, very low interest rate, and the pay down is one of the conditions that the bank required of us to continue and to extend it for additional three years.
Okay. And so in 2015, at that time, we have to look at getting a longer-term mortgage, or loan, I mean?
We will do one of the two things, the same way as we did here, depending on the market conditions. Most likely, we'll go to the bank and ask them if they'll continue the variable rate interest rate, and we'll have funds to pay down. But if the market conditions are better, to do a fixed rate at that time, we'll do a fixed rate. And matter of fact, the conditions of this loan, Mitch, correct me if I'm wrong, but if fixed rate looks better at any time during the loan, we can take this loan out with a fixed rate.
That's correct. We structured it so there's no prepayment penalty. We have the ability to do that anytime.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. You know, it's kind of, when I look at this, it's kind of like opening the door again, and that door being open. Did we look at any other financial institutions to see if they could better this deal?
Yes, sir. We looked at the marketplace in general, and we have, the city has taken and looked at variable rate interest products on different other financings. We compared those rates, as well as our ability to pull up rates in the marketplace, and we feel this is still a very beneficial overall financing to the city. I think the one thing that you should consider and remember is that you have to look at this not just at the interest rate alone, but the security you're being given, or that the bank is being given, and that other terms and conditions are weighed into it also. But we are able to sit here and tell you that's a very, very good interest rate.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Got a couple announcements to make before we go on, is congratulations to Mr. Eric Schmitz, newest member of the Gateway Review Board, and to Mr. Paul Epstein, who Parks and Rec Board, term expiring 2014. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you to council. I appreciate it. Look forward to serving.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next issue on our agenda is subject Memorializing Resolution Transfer of Army Reserve Center Property. The recommendation is that City Council approve the resolution memorializing the transfer of the George P. Wentworth Army Reserve Center to the Pensacola International Airport for exclusive use and control.
Move the approval. Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Was that you, Mr. Weiss?
Yes, sir.
Seconded? Okay. Discussion. Audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
The next item on our agenda, Mr. President, is reimbursement resolution, Army Reserve Center property. The recommendation is that City Council adopt the reimbursement resolution allowing the city to repay itself for expenditures incurred for certain public improvements, including the purchase of the George P. Wentworth Army Reserve Center property.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to have someone explain this to me a little bit, please. Specifically, it's regarding the payback to the city from the airport and the $200,000 that why the airport is not paying that and why the city is paying.
Absolutely. Councilman Townsend and Mr. Barker can address that issue for you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. President, members of City Council, Mr. Townsend, if you recall, this item had occurred about three or four fiscal years ago, where we discussed this property, and we thought the transaction would occur a lot quicker, but we did run into some issues with the federal government and actually transferring the land. During that time, it was always planned that the city would get $3.3 million for the property that's been reconfirmed in an appraisal. In addition to that, as you probably have seen, the Reserve Center has been torn down at this point, and those dollars also will be reimbursed as part of the purchase price from the airport. Earlier this year, last fiscal year at the end, there was opportunity to us to apply to the state for SIB loan with a subordinate interest rate, and they accepted that. You actually bid on the rate, and you see if they accept it.
Can I interrupt you a minute? And that's the reason why I think that we decided to approve it, because of the grant that we were going to apply for. And if I think I read this correctly, it was granted, and we are now turning it down. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Let me try to explain. When council originally approved this, the SIB loan was not involved. That was three or four years ago. Most recently, you do remember correctly, that the SIB loan was applied for, looked like a very favorable interest rate that we could get on that, and went forward with that. When they sent us the documents in May, there were some issues that the financing team determined was not in the best interest of the airport nor the city to move forward with. And what this agreement is doing is a reimbursement resolution that we will go out and look, probably through local banks, at a loan for the money instead of using the SIB funds at this time. But the deal will go through. The airport will be paying back the debt. The borrowed funds will pay back the city.
Okay. Thank you.
She was first.
Yeah. Ms. Myers?
Well, I had a similar question, and you just mentioned, well, let me just read from the memo here. It says that the SIB application, I assume, was approved, and that the city changed its mind. But it says proposed long terms offered by SIB were a 10-year amortization at a 2.75% interest rate, which were consistent with the application. However, the agreement contained other mandates and requirements that were not compatible with the airport's outstanding debt and pledged revenue sources. What were those mandates and requirements that were not compatible?
Mitch, you want to address those, or have Richard address?
I think Richard should address the primary one, which is dealing with the state infrastructure bank's own requirement.
The SIB loan has a requirement that it not be subordinate to any unrated debt, and the city has a bank loan outstanding with the airport financing that is, of course, not rated because it's a bank loan. And when we explained to the SIB that, of course, it wouldn't be rated because it's a bank loan, they said it basically didn't matter to their rules that as long as it wasn't rated, they wouldn't be able to make the loan to the city.
And from a financing standpoint, we looked at, you know, would it be beneficial to take that loan out? It is not beneficial for the city to take that loan out at this time, and I don't think that it will be anytime. It was a very good rate we received at that time. So what we're asking council to do is approve the resolution so we can move forward. It won't stop the project while our financial advisor is checking with the local banks for funding of the project. And we have done this on many occasions as far as doing the reimbursement resolution. It doesn't stop the process, and it allows us to move forward with the bank loan. And I would guess within the next 45 to 60 days, we will have a resolution, I guess, on the banks, Mitch, that you're looking at. We've talked to several of the banks. It may turn out that we're looking at another variable rate, because variable rates are very good at this time. But if we get a fixed rate that's a good rate, we may be bringing that forward. We will be looking at a 10-year term, similar to SIB, but simply the interest rate that we will be looking at with the local banks.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted more detailed information about what those unfavorable, what do you call them, mandates were that would cause us to go in a different direction. Thank you for that explanation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Weiss and Dr. Wu.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm comfortable with the commentary about this SIB loan. My concern lies in the recommendation that's being made, as it reads, "allowing the city to repay itself for expenditures incurred for certain public improvements, including the purchase of the Army Reserve." My concern is the word "certain public improvements." We normally have recommendations that go into a... We normally have recommendations that go into a great amount of detail. If we're buying a truck, it has the purchase order, contract number. You've heard Mr. Reynolds or yourself read them out at a meeting and they're very detailed. I need to know what certain public improvements are. I think the listing of those, if they're within this and I missed it, or if it's something that can be provided by Thursday, so I can support this. I'm just concerned that that's a very undefined portion of the recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. They, and they're, I know it was a very long agenda, but it is on the last page of the resolution, Exhibit A, where it describes which is basically the same criteria and the description of the project that was used for the SIB loan.
Which page, I'm sorry?
Okay, it's Exhibit A, and it's listed online as Page Three of the reimbursement resolution. Behind that item.
Okay. Okay.
You want me to read the, that's, that's fine.
I'd probably nod off at that point.
Dr. Wu?
Thank you.
Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm in favor of the proposal. I just had a curiosity question. I know recently the bond rating was changed for the airport. Will that have any impact on what we're looking at here?
I'll, I'll let Mitch respond to that as, in general, about the bond ratings also.
Thank you, Dick. Mr. President, Mr. Wu. The change in the bond ratings will not affect, in my opinion, the particular revenue that, or particular financing that we're looking at. It's a subordinated debt. It's a general aviation revenue debt security. So I think we feel comfortable with it. In, in our previous negotiations and bidding with the banks, they've all become very familiar with the airport financing structure. And while you are referencing the most recent Moody's downgrade, I think what, two things should be pointed out about that particular rating process is that we were upgraded several years ago by Moody's to the higher level based upon them recalibrating all of their ratings around the United States. So therefore, when we bumped ourselves up above what we were, the level of ratings that we had with the other two rating agencies, Standard and Poor's and Moody, Fitch, this particular rating process now they've gone through puts us back at the same level that we are and continue to be with the other rating agencies. And I would like to highlight the other fact that it, Moody's has come out in the last two years and put a negative and downgraded situation on all airport industry financing. So I think it's an industry-wide, or sector-wide effort on behalf of that particular rating agency, and they have a great concern, and that is irrespective of the City of Pensacola Airport.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. President.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the committee, audience? I just had, out of curiosity, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask here or not, but how much is Mr. Lot and Mr. Owens' firms making out of the refinancing?
Well, the refinancing will, will depend on what the bank is. Now, I, I do have it on the, the other one. I don't think I have it, Mitch. Do I, on the, you have the information?
Excuse me. We have, uh,
This is the Bank of America loan.
That's the Bank of America.
You're speaking about this loan.
Well, I, Okay. The, if I may, Dick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Basically, since we have not formalized the financing in, basically, the, I don't think we, we have, we have not put together, as your financial advisor, a cost on this, on this loan we're talking about currently. We will go through that process as historically the city is required and your finance director, we have contracts. Those fees must be within those contractual amounts. And on all previous financings over the last, last year that we've done, they've all been with, within the dollar amounts that are prescribed and dictated by your contracts.
Is it normally done as a percentage or specific dollar amount?
It, it's based on the size of the issue.
Okay.
So for example, let me just, because I happen to have those on the Bank of America loan, which may be similar. For the financial advisor fee, it's $12,500 plus 500 of, of cost.
Okay.
And for the bond counsel fee, it's $19,120 with 300 for expenses. So to give you an idea. And then when we put this together, of course, it will come back to council for approval, and I'll have those costs that we worked out at that point.
Okay. All right. All right, good. Thank you. Okay, so motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. President, is subject resolution authorizing the purchase of natural gas from the Black Belt Energy Gas District. The recommendation is that city council approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a gas supply agreement with Black Belt Energy Gas District.
Move for approval. Motion and a second. Discussion. Ms. Myers?
Yes. In the summary, it says that the Energy Services of Pensacola has an opportunity to participate in a gas supply purchase that is expected to reduce the cost of gas ESP purchases for its customers by at least 25 cents per unit. How will that impact the gas bills of residential and commercial customers?
Thank you for pointing that out, Councilwoman Myers, because it is probably the biggest plus about this particular agreement. We can get the details on what an average impact would be for an average customer, certainly for you, and I can have that by first thing in the morning.
I would really appreciate it if you, so we can have it before Thursday, because I know that's a, you know, people want to know that. That's very important and one of the pluses of this agreement. And also, can you explain to me what a pre-purchase agreement is? Because, I mean, I read the contract and I read everything, but I'm not sure that I really understand it if I had to explain it to somebody.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Suarez can answer that question for you.
Okay, just briefly.
Councilwoman Myers, this structure was created several years ago so that municipally-owned gas utilities could, in essence, bond their systems and make a purchase of gas for many years into the future. And it's, quite frankly, there's lots of different methods of creating this organization that makes this purchase legal and, and viable for the system that's doing it and viable for its customers. It seems that each one's different than we've looked at. This one allows us to enter into the agreement without being party to the group that is forming and bonding their systems to actually make the purchase. We're simply agreeing to purchase some of the gas that they'll, they will be bonding. They, they borrow the money, in essence, and, and purchase the supply for, in this case, 30 years in advance. And because of the tax-free nature of municipal bonds, there's a savings that can be transferred then to the cost of the gas and passed along to your customers.
So, so basic, basically, our resolution is just giving them the assurance, basically, to take to the bank, so to speak, or whoever's issuing the bonds, that, that they have a customer?
That's correct.
Okay. And the one final question I have has to do with the attorney fees for this, which is over $100,000. Is that correct for negotiating this transaction?
No, ma'am, it is not.
Okay.
We, we will be paying Lot and Associates $100,560 for services previously rendered. We have probably worked, and Don can help me, about four or five of these transactions that Mr. Lot has worked on and actually went out at the direction of a previous city manager to try to assist putting one of these deals together locally. And when council approved Mr. Lot's contract in 2008, he added information in there about the cost for this. And so the way we, we worked his contract is, well, if we ever do a deal where we get savings, then we will come back and we'll pay you for the work that you have done. But for this particular transaction, there are no fees from Mr. Lot in. It's just that this is an ongoing cost that was in his contract. If we ever did a prepaid deal, that it would be done and, and paid. And so if this one does get through, because the last four or five have not happened, but if this one finally does get through and gets approved, then we will be paying Mr. Lot this charge for previous work done.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Pratt?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm sort of following up on Ms. Myers' comments combined. How many units do we sell of gas a year? Just?
We sell 3 billion cubic feet.
Okay, so that, so that would be like, times 25 cents would be the amount of savings that if we pass it through?
No, ma'am. We, our strategy is to layer in prepays as they become available because, just like any other hedge, the, the dollars and cents change over time. So this will be roughly 10 to 15% of our base load.
Okay.
It's a very small percentage, but it's our first one. It allows us to recover at least 25 cents. We were hoping that the actual discount will be in the 35 cent range. It all depends on what the interest rates are at the time and that sort of thing, what it closes at, which is one of the reasons why we've never been able to consummate a deal in the past. The economics never came together and we weren't able to, to make it happen. At any rate, this discount will be very small to our customers, but it's one strategy we use, including, along with other strategies, to try to minimize the, the cost of gas to customers.
And, and I guess in line with that was, where is the money for Mr. Lot going to come from? Is it, basically, are we not going to see the savings until we've gotten $100,000 in savings?
That's correct.
And then customers will start seeing that savings? So how, how long do you think it'll take to, to see that kind of savings in a, in a customer's account?
It'll be roughly a year before those savings, the savings accumulates enough to cover Mr. Lot's expense, and then the, it will pass on to the customers after that.
Wow. All right, thank you.
Mr. Weis?
Thank you, Mr. President. And that's kind of my question as well, as far as understanding this and being able to explain it to citizens. I'll volunteer my own account, but I'd like to see a bill before this is passed and then what it would look like after it, because you spoke of the layering of these prepays, and it gets quite complicated to explain to someone. If we could have that before Thursday, if there's also a commercial account example that we could, could get.
Certainly.
Does council want more than my account analyzed? Or, I mean, I just, I want something to look at to say, this is the math, to be able to show it to citizens and explain to them.
So on your own gas account, that's what you're asking for?
Yeah, I mean, if I'm giving permission to use it, just so we can see an example of what it looks like. That's what I have to explain to folks. And, you know, I understand the detail here, but to be able to compare that for citizens, kind of like when we did when we had the discussion of, of how we were going to change the, the rates that we had for the stormwater. Remember, there were 10 different examples for, for different ranges of ownership. So I don't know if there's a range of usage we could address to understand this better. I just want to make sure it doesn't look like a rate increase, is what I'm, I'm talking about, because we're not seeing the improvement for a year. What's it going to do in that timeframe?
Okay. Mr. Reynolds, can you make that happen?
Yes, sir.
If I could just point out to Councilwoman Weis, because I don't want anybody to be disappointed, that the discount's going to be very, very small, because it's a very small percentage of our gas. We'll provide the information.
Okay. All right, Dr. Wu and Mr. Johnson?
I, I think you took the words out of my mouth. I think people are getting the wrong impression. I think if you tell council what percentage we're talking about of the overall picket, picture, I think that would help them put it in proper perspective. I think a lot of council members are seeing this as a 25 cent cut in all the gas we're getting, not realizing what percentage of the total pie this new piece will be.
Yes, it's, it's roughly 10 to 15% of our annual purchases for all customers, and that's including industrials and commercials and so forth. So residential-wise, it's going to not have much impact. Over time, as we add more and more prepays, and some of them might offer discounts, when prepays were very hot in the last decade, some, some systems were able to get as much as a dollar discount. That would be huge if we could get something like that. And we expect those economics to come back sometime in the future. That's why our strategy is to layer these in over time. So while this one may not provide much of a benefit to the customers, the strategy, I think, in time will prevent, provide significant benefit.
And the reason that, that I wanted that explanation is I don't want somebody reading the paper that we're going to get 25%, 25 cents off each unit, and then wonder why their bill hasn't been automatically reduced tomorrow. And we're only talking about 10% of our total supply at this time. So, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Suarez.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much. And I've been so immersed in studying the urban chicken farming issue that I've let this one kind of slide by me a little bit. But anyhow, with that said, has this, did we look at any competitors to see if the price that we're getting is, is a good price? How has this been vetted, et cetera? Have we looked at any other, any other gas districts, et cetera, to see how these prices match up to them?
Councilman Johnson, this is not a purchase of gas per se. The, the transaction actually provides a financial discount on the gas we purchase right now. In other words, our contract is with BP. BP will still be providing the gas. It simply provides an additional discount through some financial maneuvers to allow us to purchase this gas at, at a reduced cost. And what-
Through some financial maneuvers? Explain that to me, because that's when I start, it gets a little gray to me and I can't, I don't understand that. Could you explain that?
I'll do my best. Yes, sir. A, a group of, of municipal gas systems in South Alabama formed a, an entity called Black Belt Energy. Black Belt Energy is, is going to issue bonds to accumulate funds to purchase gas supply for years in the future. But it's actually a financial transaction that, that creates the discount. The discount is derived from the sale of the bonds and the fact that they are a tax-exempt financing structure. And because of this tax-exempt nature, that translates into a discount for purchasing the gas. And we're taking advantage of that discount, not as a member of the group, but simply entering into an agreement with them in order to take advantage of their tax-exempt status and purchase part of our supply from BP, roughly 10% of our supply. It, it's far more complicated than that, and I probably can't begin to explain all the maneuvers that are, that are happening between both the financing agencies and the agencies that guarantee the, the transaction and the final structure that translates to a discount to be, through BP to us. But that's essentially the, the elements of the transaction.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody from the audience, the public? Ms. Dubuson?
Well, I went to the Black Belt site and read their proposal. And to answer your question, Mr. Johnson, I believe that several of the Florida surrounding entities are doing the same thing, purchasing through them, so that I believe that what you're referring to as our competition may also be one of the agents that they will be serving.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Just in time, sir.
Mr. President, the next thing on the agenda is subject ordinance amendment schedule of gas rate and charges. Recommendation is that the city council approve a new proposed rate for flexible governmental industrial transportation service rate and approve clarification revisions in the ordinance of the schedule of gas rates and charges for Energy Services of Pensacola, ESP.
Count, committee? Sir, motion? Move for approval.
Second?
Motion and a second. Discussion. Questions? Ms. Myers?
Yes, I would like to call Mr. Reynolds' attention or Mr. Suarez's attention to these revisions in the ordinance. Item 16, 16C says, customer charge $200. And then in parentheses, it has a dollar sign, then it has 1-5-0-2-0-0. Is that a typographical?
Yes, ma'am, that is a, that is a typographical.
Because that is $150,000 and 200. So I think that-
That, that should be 200 in parentheses.
Exactly. Exactly. So I just wanted to call that to your attention before we approve this ordinance. I mean, you know, so should we approve it with the stipulation that what's in parentheses will be $200 rather than 150, 200?
Yes, ma'am. We will have that available for Thursday and have it corrected. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Otherwise, you've got my approval for it.
Okay. Anyone else? Public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. City of Pensacola's Public Housing Agency, FY 2012 Annual Plan, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. The subject is the City of Pensacola's Public Housing Agency, PHA, FY 2012, 2013 Annual Plan. The recommendation is that city council approve the City of Pensacola's Public Housing Agency, PHA, FY 2012, 2013 Annual Plan.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Questions? Public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. President, the next item on the agenda is subject award of bid number 12, Tac 10, excuse me, 010, demolition of the former Blount Middle School. Recommendation is that city council award a contract for the demolition clearance of the former Blount Middle School to Cross Construction Services Incorporated. The lowest and most responsible bid in the amount of $397,000 plus 10 percent contingency for the base bid and additive alternate number one. Further, that city council approve a supplemental budget resolution to provide funding for the full cost of the demolition clearance of the property.
With your pleasure.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. But Dr. Pratt.
Just real quick, I, sorry, I missed the previous one, but it's a similar question. I would just like Mr. Reynolds to explain to us the, how the housing department is being directed at this point. We were understood during the budget process last fall that housing was in charge of planning and offices sustainability, then Ms. Hubbard has left and there's been a vacancy for the director. And I was just hoping we could get a quick update on who is directing the housing department.
Let's, can we do that at the discussion portion of the meeting?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any questions on the motion or comments? Public? All in favor? Mr. Johnson.
Are we still in the demoing?
Yes.
Okay. I had a quick question.
Okay.
What do we do with the scrap metals, et cetera, from this demo? Is that, and again, I was trying to read very quickly, any materials that are reusable, recyclable, that can be sold for scrap? Is that taken into consideration when we do these bids?
That is part of the bid, Councilman Johnson, what the individual corporations, companies will do. It'll come into the particular demolition. It's the same thing that we did, for example, with the Army Reserve Center. And they'll figure that, the reimbursement for that scrap into their base bids.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, sir.
I think, sorry, Mr. President.
Okay, that's fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is subject award of bid number 12, Tac 028, Burnham Woods Stormwater Retrofit Project. The recommendation is that city council award a contract for the Burnham Woods Stormwater Retrofit Project, bid number 12, Tac 028, to Utility Services Company Incorporated of Gulf Breeze, Florida. The lowest and best responsible bidder in the base bid amount of $202,216 plus a 10 percent contingency.
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion. Motion and a second. Discussion. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, looking at this, it had, you say that it came from the approved lists of the stormwater projects. Can you tell me what number this particular project was, or did we have them prioritized the listing? And this is the first one on the list? And it did not jump over any of the other approved lists?
Mr. Garza can address that for you. Councilman Townsend.
And as Mr. Garza comes up, I just want to point out, this is not anything that's going to improve stormwater flow. It's just a baffle to be able to catch the debris instead of it going into the water supply.
Thank you.
Okay.
Correct. Councilman Townsend, to answer your question, what we've done is used previous studies. We've had studies done on Baidahar, Carpenter's Creek, to define where the major outfalls are inputting water into these bodies. And the way we prioritize our stormwater projects is the worst first. We try to maximize our impact by attacking the larger units, getting the biggest bang for our buck. So during the last eight years, we've been working through these outfalls. We're doing one at Drew Circle. We're doing one down at Cypress Street. So it's, this is a large 48-inch drain going into Baidahar. So we're trying to mitigate the gross pollutants, the coarser solids and floating debris that we can get out.
Thank you. Well, the president explained it to me. I do know that we did do a little juggling of some of those projects to take care of them. My question was whether this was one of them, and I think I understand that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to actually tack on to what Councilwoman Myers said earlier and just remind everybody, Mr. Garza, that Saturday afternoon, my neighbor and I and my lady friend went for a cruise on a boat to kind of take a look at what's happening in Baidahar after these extreme rains. And what I saw really broke my heart, the debris that's in Baidahar after a storm like this. I just want to remind the council of that. And I'm hoping that, you know, efforts to keep things out of our street, you know, improve street sweeping efforts and all this to keep this stuff out of our streets, because what I saw in Baidahar Saturday afternoon was depressing. It really, really was very depressing. And I had some complaints and we assessed the damage and then I went and had a cocktail. Thank you.
Ms. Myers.
Thank you for those comments, Councilman Johnson. I too went out and looked at Carpenter Creek. I didn't go all the way down to Baidahar. I couldn't get there because of all the flooding. But I did have the opportunity to go over to one of the stormwater retention ponds I have brought to the attention of Mr. Garza. Now it is, because of the grass cutting, it is all eroded out. Machines can't even get down to the pond now to even cut the grass. But I'm going to have a hard time supporting this, and I'll tell you why. Because I noticed, you know, that on these committee memorandums and recommendations from the mayor's office, it also has a staff contact on each one of them. And unfortunately, staff is not allowed to respond to council, at least to me anyway. I can't speak for other council members. But when I've contacted, Mr. Garza, making inquiries, simple inquiries, like when is a road scheduled to be resurfaced? Mr. Garza informs me, he's not allowed to respond to me. So I don't want to put city staff on the spot by inquiring as to things that appear in these memos. And I would prefer to make inquiries of Mr. Garza, because Mr. Garza is by far the most knowledgeable person regarding every crook and cranty in the city of Pensacola. So it really concerns me that I'm asked to vote for something and the staff person, the most critical staff person, in my opinion, who I would like to make some inquiries of, is not able to respond to me. I have to go to the mayor's office. So I don't know if I'll be supporting this or not, but I just want to raise that as a concern.
I know this isn't exactly on topic, but I want to respond to that just a bit, is, you know, one of the things that I do, and I send very, very few emails, but one of the things that I do is I, for requests like this, I send it to Ashton Hayward, I copy Bill Reynolds, and then I also copy the staff person that is, that I'm thinking is the best one to respond to it. And I cover my bases. And I've just never had any issue of getting feedback on that. And that way, you're not directing somebody, you're not jumping, but it also gives them a chance to coordinate their response back to you. And so, anyway, I just... Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I was going to echo something along the same lines and also just remind everyone that anytime any member of council would like to meet with a member of staff, let me know and I'll arrange it. And we'll be more than happy to have all of your questions answered. And if we don't have the answers to your questions, we'll do the research and we'll find the answers to your questions. We're here to help you be informed of the issues. My role, part of my role, is to assist in that. And alls I have to do is get a phone call or an email and then I'll do my best to assist in making that happen. And if it's not something that staff handles, but it's something that the office of the mayor handles, then I'll let you know who the appropriate person is in the office of the mayor to ask that question to. Thank you, sir.
Okay. And, but do you have any questions you need answered on this?
No.
Okay. Mr. Public, have any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And Balin and Spring Streets conversion.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on our agenda is subject award of bid number 12, Tac 029, Balin and Spring Streets two-way conversion. And the recommendation is that city council authorize the mayor to execute a contract for the two-way conversion of North Spring and Balin Streets with Gulf Atlantic Contractors Incorporated. The lowest and most responsible bidder in the amount of 370, excuse me, $357,006 plus up to an additional 10 percent contingency for unforeseen conditions and 5 percent inspection allowance, and that city council approved the concept of the two-way conversion. Further, the city council approve a supplemental budget resolution to provide funding for the completion of the Balin and Spring Streets two-way conversion.
Committee?
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Second. Okay. Motion and a second. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like a little explanation on why this is on the council's agenda and additionally on why the council's being asked to approve the concept of the two-way conversion. We approved the master plan, but I don't think in the past the council has had to approve the concepts that the CRA has approved since they were in the master plan. But why it's on our agenda in general and why in particular that part of it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a public works project. Therefore, per city council policy, it needs to be approved by council.
Since it's being done, okay. I guess, I looked back, I guess, at previous ones, because it seemed odd to me and previous ones didn't require the council to approve them, but maybe the, and there haven't been any in my time of this nature that I found when I searched, but...
I don't recall which way we did it before, and I'll defer to you, Dr. Pratt, on that. I know that there's a little brighter line between what the CRA is and what the city is now than there used to be. And that pretty much happened while you were president, so, or chairing that committee. And so, that would be my guess.
I'm fine to approve it. I just thought it was odd that it was on this agenda.
Anybody else? Yes?
One comment, I just want to thank staff for providing an abundance of evidence and documentation that they have not only worked with the jurisdictional agencies, but also with the affected members of the community. I think we all know that CRA agenda packet was full because seven-eighths of it contained that documentation.
Did you need to say something, Mr. Garza?
He wasn't here.
Just want to brief council that be patient with us on this project. It's going to take a couple of weeks to get the contract executed, but the primary elements of this project are converting the traffic signals at Garden and Servantes. The lead time on just ordering that materials is a minimum 12 weeks. So even though you're approving it now, we're not going to see anything going on for three months, just to make everyone aware.
Okay. Anybody else on the committee? Public? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Supplemental budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the agenda is subject mid-year supplemental budget resolution. The recommendation is that city council approve the resolution amending the fiscal year 2012 budget.
Committee?
Move the approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Questions? Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. And it's just a matter of form. During our transition process, one of the requests of council is that any resolution, supplemental budget resolutions that we do are considered separately by council on a singular basis. And I know there was times during the year last year that we approved numerous ones that we had not seen. So basically, we're first seeing them in this resolution. And I just wanted clarification from staff on that, if this is one of the instances that we had done last year. And then also, just a notation, I think would be important for the citizens as well, because it just says the majority of these, if there could be a star or something put by the ones that are being newly considered by council. So it'll call it out to us, but also the citizens will understand.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds, I believe Mr. Barker wants to address that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Council President and Mr. Weiss, you're absolutely right. As you'll see, that even on this agenda, we have separate resolutions for the items that's come forth, and we've tried to do that. If you recall, in my quarterly reports and in my monthly briefings to council, I had mentioned several times that we were going to be short on revenue. So that's the first item that we're recommending adjustments for in that area. And we can, in the future, if there are items that y'all have not considered or I have not mentioned, I will put that on there. I think the only particular issue may be the grant item that has not been mentioned to council, looking over it quickly. I think most of the other items have been mentioned to council. And the maritime park issue on the last page is an item that council was aware of, but not specifically mentioned at. If you remember, when we did the borrowing, there were certain proceeds that we held ourselves that did not have to go through the new market tax credit structure. So that item and the grant items are the main items that although you were aware of, have not been specifically mentioned in the quarterly reports or in the monthly reports. We would have done those at the end of the fiscal year, but the airport wants to get moving on the grant expenditures and the actual proceeds from the new market tax credits are down to the level that we need to start paying for the project out of our funds. So we've brought that one forward at this time, too. But looking over it quickly, that's all I remember, and I'll make a note to asterisk those. Matter of fact, for the item that will be on the agenda, if there's any that I've missed and including those I've just mentioned, I'll asterisk and put that on there for Thursday night.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Anyone else? Audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. President, the next item on the agenda is subject Transportation Security Administration Law Enforcement Officer Reimbursement Program Application. The recommendation is that city council authorize the submission of a multi-year cooperative agreement application in the amount of $392,913 to the Transportation Security Administration, TSA, for its FY 2013, FY 2015 Law Enforcement Officer Reimbursement Program and authorize the mayor to accept the grant if offered.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. President, the next item on our agenda is voluntary annexation of properties. The recommendation is that city council approve the annexation of portions of 30 parcels which lie outside the city limits currently.
Move to approve. Second?
Motion in a second. I'm delighted to see this.
Hallelujah.
Very delighted to see. Yes, sir?
And if I may, Mr. President, this is the beginning of a sustained effort that's been headed up by Helen Gibson, the mayor's chief of neighborhoods, who has done an outstanding job in outreach to the communities. And essentially, what we're doing is trying to show individuals, individual property owners, one by one, what the impact of coming into the city limits of the city can be for them. And we've been very upfront in regards to both the positive and the negative of that. The positive that a lot of people don't understand is that with the professional firefighter organization that Pensacola is fortunate to have, our ISO ratings are, in other words, the amount of what people have to pay for fire insurance is actually lower than in the county in a lot of respects, and that's just one of the many issues. These particular parcels are ones that are split, so half are in the county and half are in the city. And Helen's just done a tremendous job in moving forward with this program, and this is the beginning. This is the beginning of a sustained effort by the mayor to bring more property into the city limits. Thank you.
And add to that, not only lower insurance in many cases, but...
Better protection.
They're better protected, and also, there's hidden in the county's expenses that a lot of people don't consider, the MSTUs and MSBUs that you may have to pay for different areas there, and that, and you can quickly get up to approaching whatever the millage rate is for the city of Pensacola. Ms. Myers?
Yes, I just want to recognize Helen Gibson for her hard work. I have done some work with Ms. Gibson on annexation over in District Two, and it is not easy. It is very tedious...
Yeah.
...work, and very frustrating, and you just want to say to people, "Why don't you get it?" You know? But anyway, I want to recognize her, and also, I'm just really excited about all of these properties that are being annexed in, and of course, District Two is growing with the annexation of the undeveloped property there at the corner of Airport and Davis. So I'm really delighted that that property owner has asked for voluntary annexation into the city. It's wonderful.
Okay, thank... Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much, and I was just trying to look through some of the properties here, and one that comes to mind that I think is kind of, is Pensacola State College is half in, half out, half in the city, half out of the city. They've acquired pretty much most of the property there in the triangle north of them in the 12th Avenue, Underwood, 9th Avenue there, Triangle actually is tipping that far up. And that might be one we could approach and ask if they want to bring all of that into the city. So you've got half of Pensacola State College in the city, half or part of it outside the city. And of course, our neighborhood right across from there is the Airport Commerce Park, and as that thing continues to grow, I think that we need to look at annexing that also. So those two areas right there would be, I think, maybe easily done. I say that, but probably wouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You know, on the Airport Commerce Park, I'm glad you brought that up, and it's not germane to the motion here, but I just want to put a bug in your ear, is since we're the owner, the city is the owner of many of those properties over there where the Commerce Park's going to be, can we, in effect, vote to put ourselves into the city and trump all the, well, I say all, what few remaining property members are over there? So... Ms. Crawford had her hand up.
Yeah, she can help address that issue.
Mr. President, I believe it's only the residents who get to vote, not the property owners.
Not the property owner, except just residents.
Yes, sir. Basically, that's a voluntary acquisition program?
Yeah.
And we've made it very clear to them that we would not proceed with any type of annexation unless they directed us to do so because of the voluntary status, because we're still going to be continuing to negotiate their acquisition prices down the road. And so, we've been very good neighbors to that community, and we would like to continue to be very good neighbors to that community.
Okay, I won't bring it up again, if Ms. Gibson may. She wanted to respond, too, sir.
I do also want to indicate that this is proceeding under the voluntary annexation provision of the statute, which means that it is the determination of the owner to come in. So while we work with them, speak with them, and try to encourage them, it is their decision. So as the airport does acquire property, it will be very easy to do that, because we will then be the owner, but we are not, at this time, usurping authority to anyone to come in.
Okay. All right. Good interview. Thanks. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Ms. Gibson. If we contacted Pensacola State College about bringing them in, like I said, we have...
No, sir, but that will be one that I will definitely follow up on a minute.
Yes, ma'am, I think that'd be a great effort to go, because like I said, part of that is, most of that Pensacola State College is in the city, and now they have some that's outside. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion in the public? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. President, the next item on our agenda is request for voluntary annexation, 5800 North Davis Highway. The recommendation is the city council approve the request to annex 5800 North Davis Highway into the incorporated city limits of Pensacola.
Move to approve. Second?
All right. Motion in second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay.
And, Mr. President, at this time, Mr. Ed Spears would be more than happy to give you an update on the CNPA.
Mr. Spears, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. It's a pleasure to come before you again to provide an additional update on the Maritime Park. I wish I could be here today discussing the amazing grand opening celebration that was planned for Saturday, but sadly, I am not. However, I will provide you with an overview of the Maritime Park project and an update on the events of Saturday. I am happy to report that the construction of the Maritime Park is complete. We are currently working through final punch list for the stadium amphitheater and the surrounding grounds. Operation, management, and maintenance contracts for the stadium amphitheater and ground have been executed between the city, the CNPA, and the Blue Wahoos. There are two exciting changes you may notice on your next visit to the park, which I've got a picture coming up for here while I show you this one. These pictures were taken on the 5th, about a week ago. The first addition is all of the bench seating, what was bleachers on the left and right wings of the outfield, have been replaced by individual box seats, which are the blue seats that you are accustomed to in the stadium. So the entire stadium seating is now the fixed individual box seats. The second addition that the team has provided is a secondary scoreboard. This has been placed on the facade of the press box, and it allows the visitors and guests to the stadium who are sitting on the outfield seating berm to see the score and to better track the game, and that was provided at no cost to the city or CNPA for that scoreboard there. This is the amphitheater. These were taken a few days prior to our grand opening celebration. Can report that the individuals in the upper left corner would be Councilman Spencer and his lovely wife, Crystal, who were touring the facility at the same time. The facility is, it's breathtaking if you have not had a chance to view it at night. It really is beautiful out in the southeast corner of the property. This is a picture Friday, 4:00 PM approximately on June the 8th. We were setting up for the concert. You can see the stadium as it would look during a concert, set up with the lights in place, the sound system in place, to service approximately 5,000 to 6,000, as we were expecting that afternoon. So the grand opening celebration unfortunately was canceled due to severe weather. Overall, the 32-acre site performed very well. There were a couple of notable exceptions that we're now aware of and working to prevent recurrence in the future. There were some very tense moments on Saturday, I will not lie to you, but the city staff, the CNPA staff, the construction owners representative, the construction team, the grand opening team, those associated with the various musical acts and the events of the day, responded admirably and worked diligently to ensure the safety of the public and to protect our new park. Contrary to published reports, the Maritime Park Stormwater Pond did not reach its banks and did not flood Main Street. The pond marked exactly as designed, and when it did reach capacity, the surplus was discharged through the box culvert underneath Spring Street and the bridge and went straight into the bay. In fact, the CMP Stormwater Pond actually assisted in draining of Main Street, as I will show you in just a moment. So you can see at 11:00 AM Saturday, the field was basically inundated. The over-engineered drainage system of that field, by 6:00 PM Saturday, some 50 minutes after it actually stopped raining, the field itself was dry, and they were working on repairs already. This is the Stormwater Pond. The red arrow points to the overflow mechanism that allows it to drain into the bay. Oh, there's a picture missing. Bear with me just a moment, let me try and find that picture for you. Chris, can you give me a hand real quick? I updated it, it's on the drive. Yep. Same one. Picture done. I'm sorry. So as has already been discussed here today, no system can possibly be designed or constructed to contain over 13 inches of rainfall in less than 24 hours, and the Maritime Park is no exception. However, the overall design worked well, and within a few hours, the emergency had passed. In hindsight, this was a very good test in anticipation of more future intense storms such as a hurricane. This basically was a 24-hour hurricane with no wind. Here you can see Main Street flowing into the Maritime Park Pond, that pond overflowing out into the bay as it was designed. By my count, along the property, there were six trees that were toppled. There was some soil erosion primarily in the newly planted areas of the eastern side of the property, which were no more than a week old at the time of the storm. The amphitheater, there was some flooding experience at the stadium and the amphitheater. The amphitheater flooding was caused by water from the stage flooding into hollow chase tunnels that allows the large electrical cables to be fed from the stage into the electric room for light and sound equipment. The water passed through that conduit into the electric room, and we're looking at solutions for that. That should be a pretty simple fix. The water on the interior caused minimal to no damage in the back of the house. At the stadium in the southwest corner, we also experienced flooding that infiltrated the power room that services the festival power and the side lighting system. Minimal if any damage occurred in that area, but that will require a more thorough and thought-out engineering solution to that area. We have been in discussion with the Charlie Daniels Band and other entertainers regarding rescheduling their concerts, and we should be making announcements in the near future on that. Again, I'd like to thank all the city staff for the emergency response in assisting us in getting everything safely back to order on Saturday. Most of the major issues have been addressed today and will be, continue to be addressed over the next few days, and the park should be back to as we saw it last week in no time at all. Be happy to answer any questions.
Can I wish you to put back up the picture of the bar, please?
The overall picture? Yes, sir.
Hey, Mr.?
Yeah. So I ask your question regarding the memorandum of understanding that we will be dealing with pretty soon, just where, where would that building take place?
Are you referring to the memorandum of understanding with the Studer Group?
Yeah.
The Studer Group has the rights to first refusal for any of the development parcels, and basically, I'll move the cursor here. If you draw a line east-west across the south portion of the stadium, basically the festival park grounds and the amphitheater grounds, those are the main park spaces. The areas north, where I'm now pointing, are the possible development spaces that the Studer Group is working through their due diligence on all of those sites, putting together budget estimates and construction numbers, and will be selecting their sites here in the very near future. There's approximately 10 acres of developable space that are north of the south line of the stadium.
Thank you. Ed?
Yes, sir.
You've got the arrow. What now is the estimated non-structured, unstructured seating capacity at the amphitheater if we all show up with our folding chairs and organize ourselves rather in a dense fashion versus two people on a large blanket?
If you see the area I'm circling here, the seating bowl for the amphitheater, using a mathematical formula, which is roughly one adult human sitting on the ground takes up seven square feet, that area can accommodate about 5,000 individuals. Now, that's packed in very tightly, seven square feet per person. You know, closer to the stage, people would be standing more densely packed, further away, we would expect them to be more spread out. So a more realistic usage area is going to be 3,000 to 4,000, but you could get 5,000-plus in that area.
Right, and that seven square feet, I know, includes, it's walkable area in between. I mean, if any of us had been the New Orleans Jazz Festival, we know where we can choose our comfort zone, and some people like the right up against the stage, but that's what I wanted to know. Thanks.
And I can also report that we were able to test the turning radius, and a fully-loaded highway-rated 18-wheeler was able to circle around the amphitheater as designed and back into the loading zone.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Tackling on to what Councilman Townsend, the question that he had, we had to, remind council and the public that we had two parcels that were appraised recently. Is that correct, Mr. Spears?
Yes, sir.
Could you point those out and tell the public and the council of what those were appraised for, please?
We have appraised parcel two, which is the area south of the Stormwater Pond that I'm circling here. That appraisal came in at $1.6 million. It's just over 2 acres. Then we appraised this parcel right here in the northeast corner, and that was approximately $1 million also.
So we've had those two sites appraised?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if that's any indication where someone might be leaning, would that be not too far outside the lines?
We authorize appraisals when we receive a qualified, vetted interest in the property, and the mayor's office releases me to get the appraisals.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing that I really liked, Mr. Spears, so far is that we did promise the people that the south part of the park would be open to the public, and so far, we've been able to honor that promise.
Yes, sir. Councilman Wood, the entire perimeter, you can walk along the water. It's over 3,000 linear feet of either concrete sidewalks or paved promenades.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was wondering about, back in January, December, the CRA approved the $500,000 loan for the back of the house, and I was just wondering what the prospects are of any sort of repayment from the CNPA at this point. I know I've been trying to follow all the lawsuits and what's coming with that, and I was just wondering if there had been any other improvements made since we had authorized that loan besides the back of the house.
We are, Councilwoman Pratt, we are in the same position as far as the lawsuit. We have been successful in every hearing. We've won summary judgment. We've won a temporary restraining order has been converted to a preliminary injunction on the funds that we've been seeking, which is just under $500,000 in funds that would be profit to our terminated developer. It's looking very promising, and we're expecting a conclusion of that very shortly.
And I guess I should tack on with the damage from the storm, do we expect that that money will have to be recouped from the CNPA's non-existent budget, or do we think there are other sources of funding to make any repairs that are necessary?
We're working very diligently with city staff and our contractor to determine a cost estimate for the, not only the damage that was done, but the necessary redesigns and retrofit, especially in that southwest corner, that was a severe issue at the time. And we'll be providing those estimates to Mr. Reynolds at his request to be included in a compilation that'll go to the state if a state of emergency is declared by the governor and a disaster is declared by the governor, so that we can recoup those funds through the state and possibly federal government. So that would be our intended path at this point in time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make sure that I heard, Mr. Spears correctly, that Mr. Studer has first right of refusal on all buildable parcels?
Undeveloped.
On one parcel.
On one?
One parcel.
Okay, I think you said all. I might have missed it.
He has a choice. He can choose from any. He can choose from any.
He has a choice, but he doesn't have first right of refusal on all?
No.
Okay. One parcel.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll make it quick, and when a question is asked, it makes me think of something else. Where are we at right now, and this might actually be better directed towards Mr. Reynolds, but on, we have an amphitheater now that holds several thousand people. What efforts have we made to try to book, or have a booking agent hired, or bring some events in now that we have this ready to go? What efforts are we making in regard to getting people here to help pay for loans like back of the house that Ms. Pratt talked about?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We have been in the process of looking at that, and I can certainly get that information to you in detail tomorrow and outline exactly what the game plan is for that.
Yeah, you don't have to do it tomorrow, just this week. I'm just curious. Thank you.
You know, actually, I have a better idea. Why don't we just have a presentation on Thursday night, depending on what the length of the committee of the whole agenda is going to be for the consent agenda? But we certainly can, that's probably a better way of handling it. That way, the public can also have an opportunity to see as well.
That's great. If that's okay with Mr. President Hall, thank you.
And it'll be as brief as it was tonight, I hope?
I will endeavor to make it as brief as possible, sir.
All right. Anybody else from the public? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you, sir. All right. That moves us to the discussion items, and I just want to, we picked up a couple.
I just would very quickly offer to do my presentation and make it a five-minute presentation on Thursday, so we can remove the scenic highway foundation presentation from the agenda since we've gone so long tonight. I didn't see anyone from the foundation here tonight, so I'm fine with doing it Thursday, later in presentation.
And I presume you'll do it from the lectern, then?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. All right. And I guess the IT people already have your presentation loaded up?
Right.
Right, okay. Well, thank you for that. You just want to, there's some items that we're going to be discussing tonight that were not on the agenda, that we kind of picked up from Boyd Forum. One is allowing the non-union general employees that don't have a contract, you know, otherwise employed with the city, to discuss their issues and allow council to interact with them on that. We're going to discuss the housing office issue, or at least get an update on that. And then update on the flood. That's going to be in the place of audit review committee report. And then we need to talk about citizen committees and how we're going to handle those nominations. And I'll be...
Did you have chickens on there?
Yeah, we got chickens on there, but this is stuff that wasn't actually on the agenda here.
Why are we adding all these things?
Well, you know, the reason we're adding them, and I guess we could discuss them the next time, but we need to at least get them brought up here so that we can put them on the agenda next time, and...
But if we're going to have a long discussion on add-ons, I don't see why we need to put them on the agenda next time. It's just prolonging the meetings, and I see that we bring in add-ons that we haven't had an opportunity to even think about, and I just don't...
Well, I appreciate your concerns, but part of this is an effort to move the business part of the movie, meeting along.
It is.
You know, is on the things that are agendaed, to keep it germane to the motion that's on the floor.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, you did a good job on that.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Okay, but the first one does have to do with amending sections, several sections of city code for the limited practice of herbing farmer in the raising of chickens. Five years ago, five and a half years ago, when I first, or six years ago, when I first started running for this job, I never thought we'd be talking about this at City Council. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to kick off the discussion, if I may, by specifically recognizing the efforts of Mr. Wineke, who's here to talk about chickens. He has been the one that's been meeting with both members of this group, Councilwoman Myers specifically, as well as members of the public, and has brought forward some changes, some... And again, this is based upon this body's request. It's not, it's not coming from the mayor, per se. It's coming from this body's request, and so he has been putting some effort in and bringing some, trying to find a ground of agreement between everybody, and has done a great job in that. And we also have available a member of, a doctor of public health, I believe, if that's correct, Mr. Wineke?
Dr. Lanza from the Health Department.
Dr. Lanza from the Health Department, who can talk about some of the other issues. It was requested that we have a doctor present that can talk about some possible issues in regards to waste and things like that from poultry as well, so...
Well, I look for, I truly, though, I do look forward to seeing how this goes. I know that, just coming into the meeting, my preference would be to leave it status quo. We had two chickens in my neighborhood. There's 85 houses, and the two chickens lived in that neighborhood for years without, you know, anybody making a complaint about it. Finally, somebody did move into the neighborhood that didn't like chickens, and they had the game, not game, what do you call that? Animal control people come and, I guess, put the chickens down. But the, I'm, yes, ma'am?
I would just like to give Mr. Wineke his opportunity. Right now, under our present ordinance, you can have unlimited number of chickens. I have an acre of land. I'm not 50 feet close to anybody. I'm pretty isolated. I could have hundreds, maybe thousands of chickens and roosters. So I think that we've come to the point where we do need to amend our ordinance, because just allowing people to have unlimited number of chickens if they want to, and roosters, I think, does present a noise problem and also a public health issue. So I think that our ordinance, as it's presently drafted, is not meeting our needs as a community.
Okay, Mr. Wineke?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I'll try to make this brief. In a nutshell, our current ordinance has some issues, as Councilwoman Myers discussed, and members of the public. This has been an educational experience for myself. I'm not a chicken, you know, expert, or act as one. I'd like to read something that Recoup of Pensacola passed out to myself during all this issue, and it'll be brief, but it basically covers the essence of what we're discussing. Backyard chicken keeping across the country is gaining in popularity, and Pensacola is no exception. Communities that once banned chickens are rediscovering the joys and benefits of backyard chicken keeping. In response, governments are crafting codes in ways that reflect the needs of both chicken owners and the community as a whole. Unlike many communities, Pensacola never lost its heritage, and backyard chickens, under certain conditions, have always been allowed within the city limits. Pensacola's code regarding chicken keeping, however, was last reviewed more than 50 years ago. Responsible chicken owners of Pensacola, Recoup, believes that the code, as currently written, is insufficient to address the growing popularity of backyard chicken keeping. Recoup proposes the current code be significantly strengthened in certain areas and moderated in others. With that being, I've met with several of the members, talked to individual citizens, met with Councilwoman Myers, met with city staff on this issue, and what we've addressed is we've strengthened areas in some. As Councilwoman Myers pointed out, right now, the ordinance, you can have as many chickens as you want. In an urban setting, that just, I hate to use "just doesn't fly," that's a bad analogy, but it should be limited. Recoup, you know, made the offering of eight chickens, and staff didn't have an issue with that. You know, they brought forward the ban on roosters. Roosters are noisy animals as compared with chickens, so, and that was a concession they made or wanted in place. And the shelters are similar to what we have in place. What the current ordinance is very restrictive in is you can have chickens in the current ordinance, but they have to be 50 feet from any structure, from a dwelling, church, et cetera. Well, if a person has a small property 50 foot from a dwelling, there's no way they can have that, those chickens 50 feet from their own dwelling and an adjacent property owner. So staff saw no issue. Councilwoman Myers and I discussed this. You know, if you want chickens on your own property, is it really relevant if it's right outside your back door 50 feet from your house? So we struck, we struck that from the ordinance, or the proposed ordinance. Another issue was, you know, they have to be kept in pens during the current ordinance. Well, similar to other pets, you know, if you want chickens in a limited amount, you know, can they run around in a fenced yard? You know, staff didn't see an issue with that. We thought it was a reasonable concession to make. Councilwoman Myers did, too. That's really the essence of it all. You know, we struck the 50-foot requirement from the individual property owner's dwelling, as well as, you know, they must be kept in an enclosure. You still have to have a pen under the proposed ordinance, and from what I understand, again, I'm no chicken expert, is chickens go home to roost at night, so if you have a pen or an enclosure, they tend to go there at night. We're open to any suggestions, any discussion on the matter. Again, we have Dr. Lanza here from the Health Department. There was some discussion, you know, some, I guess, some concern over health issues with chickens, so that's where we stand, council.
Ms. Myers? I would like to hear from the public on this, but if you, go ahead.
Well, I have done a lot, lot of research on this, and I have spoken to quite a few citizens regarding this issue, some for, some against. And what we have to understand is the ordinance we have now is not something we should have in an urban city, where people can have unlimited number of chickens, including roosters. So we've got to change the ordinance. What the people who support urban chicken farming have proposed is extremely reasonable. They have proposed limiting the number of chickens to eight, and allowing them to have chickens close to their own dwelling, and also to allow their chickens to roam free in a fenced-in yard. We've also, when I looked at this ordinance that we have now, we also put in here the proposed ordinance, no slaughtering of chickens. That's because the purpose of having urban chicken raising is for the eggs, and for...
I do just have a question for you. What about when they stop laying?
Well, when they stop laying?
Yeah. Couldn't you bake them then, or?
Well, I don't think we should, we should have slaughtering of animals in the city. That would fall under our animal cruelty laws. And there are a lot of ordinances that prohibit the slaughtering of chickens. But you have to understand that this ordinance, that our ordinance allows a person to have an unlimited number of ducks, geese, peacocks. I mean, I've got an acre of land. I could have hundreds of peacocks if I wanted to, under our present ordinance. So the way this ordinance, proposed ordinance is revised, it wouldn't just apply to chickens, but it would apply to different types of birds, too, not just chickens. And another thing we looked at, when we looked at the ordinance, is deleting that part of our ordinance that we have right now, which is really draconian. It allows, it prohibits pigeons and doves from being in the city limits, and it allows the police or law enforcement to go out and shoot doves. So we wanted to strike that out of the ordinance. You can see why this ordinance really needs to be revised. So I think that, in my view, that it's, what we've really done is taken an ordinance that allows unlimited number of chickens and roosters and peacocks and all of that, and allows the police officers or law enforcement to go out and shoot doves and pigeons. We've modernized this. We've brought it into keeping, into keeping with more modern approaches to urban farming and gardening. And so I hope that council will support these changes, and we'll have a much better ordinance, and also help folks get some fresh eggs, and if, and also, I don't think that there's a really, if you're limiting the number of chickens to eight, that there should be a health problem here. I've done my own research at the Centers for Disease Control. One of the diseases that people are most concerned about is salmonella. I was surprised to see that you can actually contract salmonella from dogs and cats. That's on the Centers for Disease Control website. So this has been an educational adventure for me also, because I didn't know that about dogs and cats. I'm a little more careful now about letting my dogs and cats lick me, but, so that's all I have to say at this time. I'm glad to hear from the citizens and the rest of the council members.
Let me just weigh in here for a moment. I've got the sense from council that there's not any real big opposition to the idea of the urban chicken farming, and that obviously the ordinance needs to be updated to include concerns besides just chickens, and I agree with you on that. So what I would like to ask, could everybody that's here in support of urban chicken farming raise their hands, please? Okay, that's practically the whole audience out there. I would like for Mr. Darling and the other gentleman, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name now, that had already turned in their cards to speak, is to get with your group as we're discussing it up here, and pick three of you to come up and talk in favor of that, and just try not to cover the same points each time. A one, two, or three of you to speak for the group. Is there anybody out there that's opposed to the urban chicken farming? Okay, all right.
There is, or is it?
Is not.
Is not. Okay. All right, Dr. Pratt?
Thank you, Mr. President. While they're deciding who's going to speak, I'm going to raise some, I'm really not certain where I go on the chicken thing. I have some, some thoughts about the ordinance changes, but I'm, I was concerned as I read the ordinance, like, or the proposed ordinance, it shall be unlawful to keep harbor confined two or fewer ducks, geese, et cetera, within 50, 30 feet of a school, et cetera. Now, when I read that, then it says to me that then you must keep three or more. And so my question is, where did this language come from, and whether the city attorney has reviewed it for even logical consistency?
I defer to Mr. Wineke on that question. He drafted the ordinance with some assistance, and I didn't draft the ordinance. I'd be glad to take a look at it. Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, and just so everybody understands, this is the beginning stages of a discussion. This is not an ordinance that we're saying it's ready for passage. I mean, this is a collaborative effort at this point between Ms. Myers, the community, and staff. And if this body determines that they want to move forward with an ordinance, you know, this is a talking point, is what this is. Then at that point, any ordinances would be scrubbed. At that point, Mr. Messer would have an opportunity to review it for legislative sufficiency. But again, you know, just so, just to be perfectly clear, this is a discussion, this is the start of the discussion. You know, this organization may decide that it doesn't want to do any of these issues. It may decide it wants to do some and not others, but, you know, I just want to make that clear.
And I guess my concern is even just... And I guess my concern is even just a first pass in reading it through once, some of these things might have come up. And I guess it's hard because I would rather be discussing the real issues than having, getting caught up in just language that doesn't even make sense because it's not clear to me what the intent of that language is when it reads that you want there to be a mandatory three or more chickens is how you can interpret that. Additionally, I'm concerned that it says that they need to provide pens or enclosures for the chickens. Well, if you say, you know, that you could put them in your garage or something, but you leave them roaming in the, in your yard, then they might start roosting right next to someone else's house as opposed to, because my understanding is that they're not supposed to be within fifty feet of another dwelling, not your own. But if they're roaming free in a yard, then they are within fifty feet of another dwelling. So, I would think that if you wanted to have that free range idea, that the range that they get to range would need to be not within fifty feet of another dwelling or whatever the number is. Because I think that, you know, right now, we're faced with an interesting situation because the people who are here are going to be responsible chicken owners. And as has come up a few times that, you know, well, chickens are no worse than dogs, but they're responsible dog owners and they're not responsible dog owners. And when we changed, you know, I mean, and I appreciate Ms. Myers' comments about the unlimited chicken situation, but many of the residences, like in East Hill and such, there was no way under the current ordinance for them to be allowed to have any chickens. And so, it really kept it down to very few residences that could have had it. And so, when we changed this, we're changing it for everyone, the responsible ones and the irresponsible ones. And so, there was one thing that passed our, I think through, I can't remember which of the documents that said, you know, that the smell from chickens is just like when you do a compost pile wrong, it smells. Well, how, you know, they aren't going to have to go to a certified chicken school to keep chickens. So, we don't know, when we open this up, how many people are going to be responsible good chicken owners and how many new people who won't be respectful. So, I'm concerned about opening this up really broadly and what the future ramifications are.
Okay. The public, just approach the mic and state your name.
All right. I'm Paul Darling. I've got a million things to say, but I'll keep it brief because as Mr. Reynolds said, this is merely a proposal, an item for discussion. And I guess my main concern at this point in time is that we've all maybe overreacted. The fact that I, I'm the only person I know that's been cited for keeping chickens and I'm not an irresponsible chicken owner. I think their documentation and we've had other testimony that I'm pretty well-respected in the way I handle my chickens. Okay. So, that being said, I don't think we need to rush through any of this. This has been an education for me and how y'all work. If you want to take the time, we've got plenty of people here who'll take as much time as you want to be in education in how chickens are raised. I don't think, Mr. Weinicki can maybe confirm this, that this has been a tremendously serious issue, chicken keeping, and it's, it could grow. I'm not saying it can't, but...
Educational.
Is an extremely educational. This, I think, is a wonderful experience that way. But that there's no reason, there's no compelling evidence to rush into anything and that education is probably our best tool towards creating a decent code, a decent ordinance, and to eliminate the irresponsible chicken owner. As education with animal control people probably would do the same thing for dogs, cats, whatever they keep. So, I'm just going to urge patience. I'm going to be patient. I'm not in any, in dire distress. Definitely, I have a code or item hanging over my head. And as I said earlier, that if we could, you know, maybe come up with some kind of moratorium for people that are under the gun right now to let this, let it play out and just take our time and get it right. The existing ordinance has been in place for a hundred years and parts of it fifty years and it's never been an issue. I think we can give it a few more days, months, whatever it takes to get it right.
Let me suggest this, and I'd look for somebody making the appropriate motion on this, is that for our next committee of the whole meeting is that we have something drafted where we can pass that moratorium until this issue is decided. And I...
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Yes.
What would be the range of the moratorium? I mean, just, we aren't going to do any more code citations for a little while, is that what you're...
Well, and that Mr. Darling would be out from underneath the gun as well. And I would think that we restrict this right now to just chickens on the moratorium. I'm not familiar enough with the whole code that there's moratorium on enforcing everything in there, but on the idea of chickens. Yes.
I did second that, but I want to be clear because I was actually contacted by someone that has a neighbor with roosters and that is a nuisance. So, I don't, I think that that should be dealt with. I don't think Mr. Darling or responsible chicken owners, so I think clarification...
Limited to female chickens.
Laying hens.
Laying hens.
Will not be harassed.
Well, thank you. And I think, Mr. Weinicki, I think I can respect his judgment. And when I said earlier, only in extreme cases. I don't expect that, you know, if chickens are running in your neighbor's yard and tearing up their gardens, that that should not, that should be under the moratorium. Those people should be, they're irresponsible. The same thing with a rooster and that kind of thing. So, his discretion, like I say, I'll leave it up to him. And, but I know other people who've been cited who've had chickens for years and then all of a sudden this comes up as an issue, not because there's any problem with neighbors, but because of the way the code is written. So, basically, that's what I have a problem with, is the wording of the code and if we can correct that, and I'll be happy. I'll be happy.
I would like to clarify too, in seconding that motion, that I see this sort of like a real estate transaction is that there's a proposal put forward. I'd like to hear from the chicken owners what there are for issues within that, what needs to be added, what needs to be addressed, sort of go through this today and understand what we should be considering. I still have more input on what was suggested.
Well, the vote on asking for the motion was not to end discussion on this today was just to give Mr. Darling, because he had stood up during board forum, looking for some relief on that.
But I see us making a decision in a few months. I mean, we don't have a meeting till July, but that we would move this forward. So, the moratorium is not long-term and, you know, that we can't, I think we're close to working back and forth a few times on it and making a decision this summer.
Mr. Minister.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to make sure that everyone understands what we're doing here. You know, if we're talking about a moratorium on the enforcement of the ordinance, you're potentially opening a Pandora's box because, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I couldn't resist that. If you're concerned about Mr. Darling, then perhaps the better approach might be to simply have him ask for an extension of time to prepare his case and give him ninety days and see where we go with this. And at the end, perhaps either Noel Prosser dismissed the complaint, which takes him out from under the gun. But I think if, obviously, if it's the will of council, you can do whatever, you have five votes to do, but when you start passing moratoriums, it could get a little tricky out there.
Okay. Ms. Myers, just one moment. Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Weinicki is indicating he'd like to speak.
Yes, sir. Mr. Weinicki, please.
I agree with the city attorney on that. Moratoriums are a slippery slope. In Mr. Darling's case, we brought him before the special magistrate who found Mr. Darling in violation, but gave him an initial sixty days and staff had to concur with that. Staff has no issues with if the case comes back before the special magistrate at the end of the sixty days before council has made it to recommend to the special magistrate to give additional time on that. We've received additional complaints on chickens and we've handled, we've made contact with the property owners, issued a notice of violation, told them about the current ordinance as it stands, but also stated, you know, staff is looking at it, city council's looking at it. Before we go to a punitive stage, we're going to wait to see how this plays out. So, if council doesn't have an issue with that, I think...
So, you don't need any direction from council on that then? Okay. All right.
Can I remove my motion? Or remove, okay.
The motion's been removed. Are you comfortable with that, Mr. Darling?
I'm comfortable with that. Mr. Weinicki, entering agreement. Thank you.
All right. Who else from the public would like to speak?
My name is Vicki Garrett and I'm the proud owner of seven hens at the north, very most north end of the city limits. And when I first decided to have chickens several years ago, I read, and, well, actually, I told my husband I wanted chickens. He says, "You can't have chickens during the city limits." We went round and round for a couple of years before I finally got around to reading the code. Then I read the code and I read it again and I read it again and it is so unclear. I finally said, "Heck with it, I'm having chickens. Our property is large enough that we can meet the fifty-foot rule. So long as my chickens are in their pen, they're legal. When they run my backyard, they're not." And I walk occasionally with my neighbors whenever I have time and I kept waiting for one of my neighbors to say, "I saw you got chickens." You know, not one of them ever did. The only neighbors that knew I had chickens were the ones on each side of me and that's because I have chain link fence. My chickens have never gotten out of the yard. They come home to roost every night. They're so much easier than dogs. Since I've had chickens, one dog has died and one dog has moved out. I tell people all the time, "I've traded dogs for chickens. I'll never go back. I will never live anywhere where I cannot have chickens again." I used to buy chickens, used to buy eggs, the most expensive ones I could find that said all the labeling, you know, they were cage-free and organic and everything. When I first cracked my first egg, all I could think of, that five dollars I'd been spending was a waste because those eggs did not look, they looked just like the cheaper eggs. Mine just visually are so different. In preparing for this, we've read code after code and city after city and I can't tell you how much sleep I have lost on this. And what I want to say about the fifty-foot rule is that was put in place, I don't know how long ago, and I don't know why. I don't know why it's fifty feet. Some cities, some jurisdictions have fifty feet, some have twenty, some have a hundred and fifty, some have two hundred. I want to know why. I want to know, is it because you can't hear them over fifty feet away or you can't see them over fifty feet away? There's got to be a reason for that, for that amount of distance. As far as smell, there's no smell for my chickens. We put oak leaves in their coop. It's great. We love having, we love having the chickens. And my husband, who is initially hesitant about having chickens, is over the roof in love with the chickens, over the roof, and I mean seriously, in love with these chickens. They are less trouble than a dog. They produce less waste than a dog. The other night, did y'all hear the frogs croaking after all the rain? They're quieter than the croaking frogs. They're just, they're very easy to take care of. They get up by themselves, they feed themselves as long as you put the food out for them. They go to bed. You cannot keep them from going to bed in their, in their pen at night. And if you have any questions for me, because I do have chickens.
I think Mr. Johnson may have one.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just curious, what about coyotes, foxes, other?
You know, that's one, that's actually, that's one of the benefits of living in this city. I don't, I've never seen a coyote. We actually have foxes in my neighborhood. They don't live, they have not found my chickens. We have possums in my neighborhood. They have not found my chickens. My chickens are in a dog kennel, in a chain-linked dog kennel. That is their pen. And so, they're pretty, they're pretty much safe. And also regarding, regarding roosters, I know that I can legally have a rooster, but I don't want one because it would draw attention to the fact that I have chickens, for one thing, to my neighbors and also, which my neighbors don't care, but to the neighboring dogs. I don't particularly want to draw attention to dogs that run loose in my neighborhood that I have chickens back there. So, I self-regulate and have decided not to have chickens. The same thing with numbers of chickens. I would never have, you know, fifteen or twenty because I don't want to feed them, I don't want to gather that many eggs, just like most dog owners don't want to have more than one or two. Occasionally, you have people that want more. But a lot of the rules that have been written to me about in ordinances are based in fear of, from people that don't know how easy it is to take care of chickens and how, I mean, a chicken's never going to chase you down, they just, they're just really sweet, really sweet animals. And a lot of the terms that have been used tonight have been urban farming. Okay, on a farm, the chickens don't have names. Okay? Our chickens have names and they're limited. It's a limited number. And I think most city dwellers would want a limited number. And I don't think of what I have as a farm. And they save me a lot of money because, because I don't have to go get fertilizer. They provide it. The eggs are just amazing, so. I would have brought some to you, but there was a problem that somebody thought that might not be a good thing to bring, but...
Mr. Weiss.
Yes, thank you. I just had a couple of questions that related to some of the regulations that other cities have. I'm not certain exactly who gave this to council, the study of twenty-five different cities.
That was me.
Okay. And it talked about, one of the recommendations would be to have a mobile coop for them to prevent the buildup of pathogens and waste, but you mentioned you're using the waste as a fertilizer. I guess the cleanup of that, that's pretty standard, regular, or how does, how does that work?
Every day. Every day. My coop. It's done differently. The way that, the way that Paul has his coop set up, he has, on the bottom of the coop, he has pine shavings and pine has a very strong fragrance to it. When we first got our chicks, that's how we kept them in the house. We had a large crate when they were tiny and there's pine shavings in the bottom. It completely absorbs the smell and the chicken droppings just kind of go to the bottom and on top, it just looks like nice clean pine shavings and it lasts for a long, long time. Now that my chickens are out in the pen and it's a bigger area, we just cover it with the oak leaves and the carbon in the oak leaves outweighs the nitrogen that's in the fertilizer. There's no smell. As soon as it even thinks that there's going to be a smell, we just put more oak leaves on.
Okay.
So, and truly, and the chickens are so happy. I don't know if you know anything about chickens, but the tractor idea, if you leave your tractor in one place, chickens will completely take out every weed you've got, every blade of grass to, the only thing you have left is dirt. So, if you have a chicken tractor, you cannot leave it in one place too long. We've tried that and we just can't move it often enough. So, we're leaving in one place, our coop, our pen is staying in one place now and there's no smell. And the chickens are so happy because instead of having the bare dirt, I know y'all are just thrilled about this, but instead of having bare dirt to walk on, they now have these nice clean leaves and they'll make little nests in them and they're, you'll see these little dimples in the oak leaves where they have laid. It's just a much cleaner environment for them.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The vice president leaned over and I think he's interested in hearing from the doctor on this regarding health issues.
Thank you, doctor. I recently read an article, I believe from CDC, and I was reading this pamphlet here regarding some of the health issues, would you just care to elaborate a little bit?
First floor Department of Health does not have a policy on urban chicken raising versus farming. There are no or very little significant public health issues associated with this. I've heard about issues with avian flu, that is H5N1 that's present in the eastern hemisphere, it is not in the western hemisphere. If it did come our way, it would most likely be an issue for mass farming, the big farms probably would not be an issue for the small plots that we're talking about here. Salmonella is an issue with dogs, cats, various other animals, very little issue with chickens that are handled appropriately, handled appropriately. Newcastle disease, not really an issue in our community. It's usually an issue of larger operations and other parts of the world, very, not very often a problem in the United States, but it could be. H1N1 has nothing to do with chickens. It's formerly known as swine flu. So, the bottom line is very little or no public health issues. It's mainly an aesthetic issue that apparently using the appropriate oak leaves or pine shavings, the smell issue is taken care of.
The article somewhat implied that you had to watch little children petting the chickens and then putting their fingers in their mouth. I assume that that's what we have to do. have to do for any other type of-
Yeah, any petting zoo, you would, any commercial petting zoo is gonna have a place where the kids can, and adults can wash their hands after they've played with them.
Thank you, Doctor. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, thank you. One more from, Speaker from the public.
My name is-
Just be mindful, things are going your way right now.
I understand that. I want to take up your time. Councilmember Pratt, we're cognizant of the issue of the nuisance. We don't want anybody to be a nuisance either. Chickens are really low-key, they're lower-key than dogs, and, and we kind of feel like it's similar thing that, you know, there's people that are gonna abuse the privilege to drive, but we don't take away everybody's car and that kind of thing. We've tried to make it abundantly clear in our, in our literature that we want to stand with the city, stand with code enforcement in addressing nuisance issues. As a group, we intend to organize better after this issue is taken care of in terms of the code, and act as a source of information and assistance to people who may not, may not be aware of how to properly take care of chickens. And we hope to be able to, you know, to assist in that. If there are knuckleheads out there that don't want to do it right, then we're with you, bust them. That's how we feel about it, because it makes us look bad. This can be done right, it can be done low-key, and, and that's what we're all about. And I really appreciate you taking the time. I know there's a lot more important issues, but this is really important to us. Thank you so much.
Just a moment, sir. Ms. DeWese.
I actually had questions for staff.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm really excited about the effort that staff and Ms. Councilwoman Myers and the citizens have put into this. And I did have some questions, and it's sort of a mathematical thing. And I'm just looking at this, again, this study of 25 cities, and I'm wondering why the range of three to eight, where we came up with that, and I might have missed it in the discussion, because part of what they say is that the most common number of birds permitted is three to four, which supply an average of one to two dozen eggs per week, and it's depending on the size of the family. In some cases, three to four birds may not be large enough for a larger family. And it talks about that, and I'm wondering first where that number came from, and then I have some questions on permitting, enforcement, and penalties as well.
Mr. Garner might be able to address that. It was a number, I don't know how they addressed it arbitrarily or not, but it was a number offered to staff, which, you know, we-
Frankly, it was a political calculation. It was a number that we thought we could get. And, and, you know, the point is, I said in our position paper that, you know, eight chickens would produce the amount of waste as an average-sized dog, and that's what-
You're concerned with the waste.
So, so, so it's not a lot of waste, you know, dogs are gonna produce more, and if you don't take care of a dog, you'll have the same problem. My job when I was young was to go out in the yard and pick up after the dogs, I'm aware of that. Chickens are a much lower-key animal than dogs. I was in, Paul Darling, several of us in his backyard yesterday, we were having a conversation amongst the chickens are pecking around, you hardly know they're there. We felt like if we went for 10 or 12 chickens, or whatever it was, that people would go, "12 chickens?" What are you, that's really what it was about, you know. I believe you could have 12 chickens, and it just wouldn't be a problem, because they just kind of put it around the yard and eat bugs and, you know, so.
And I spoke to individuals who own chicken as well. My brother-in-law, who's a retired judge, has chickens, and spoke to him about the number, and, and he felt that was a good number, as far as not being excessive in an urban setting.
Because some municipalities limited the amount of permits. They said, "We're gonna give 25, and we're gonna, once those are out, you can put a waiting list." I don't think that we need to do that in this case, but I'm trying to understand what would be logical. So, I mean, I think if we're publishing this proposed ordinance, and the citizens have opportunity for input, obviously, everyone here is in support of chickens, and as many as you can get, but if there's other neighbors that are concerned, if we were closer to the three to four, maybe three to six, if that would be logical. Because it does go on to talk about that, that Tom Kreese, an urban chicken keeper, he feels that no more than six birds should be permitted. And that, he states that would be approximately three dozen eggs a week, and that's a lot of eggs. Even in my house, that's a lot of eggs. So I'm just concerned eight, if that's too many. We're not hearing from anyone that it's not, but I just didn't know how we arrived to that number. And then the next concern that was brought up by the citizen that's having the issue with the roosters next door, and the, the care and keeping of the chickens are concerned about that, because they are free roaming. Will we be using 3-1-1 as the reporting mechanism for citizens to call in, or?
3-1-1 is how we got the complaint on Mr. Darlin's-
So delinquent chickens go to 3-1-1, okay.
Or, or they can contact our office directly, but 3-1-1 was a mechanism used for that.
And then, once someone has a permit, I just need to know how we're going to handle that. Is it gonna have an inspection, random inspection allowed? Is it a once-a-year inspection at the cost of the owner? What are, that process? And then if they are found in default, we revoke their permit, and there's penalty, or we just simply revoke a permit? I don't know.
The way the current ordinance is written, there wouldn't be a permit process, but it's something that council directed staff to do, we could definitely look at, right? The way the current ordinance is and the proposed ordinance, it would just be the ordinance on face. If we receive a complaint, we would investigate it, make sure that they're in compliance with whatever the proposed ordinance would be.
The situation that you were talking about is Orlando, and I think the reason-
Sir. Yeah, okay, yeah. You have to be recognized first. But what I wanted to do was try to bring this in for a landing. It seems like we've got a friendly counsel here that wants to do something to move forward with this ordinance. It has just become part of the process. If Mr. Reynolds needs us to take a formal vote to get them to move forward with it, we will, if you're just willing to, and, and it's just become part of the process. You know, type up your 25 questions and give them to Mr. Wynekhy. And, and he can share them with, well, I don't know if he can share them with Ms. Myers.
That's why I'm asking here, because we can't talk, so.
Well, may I ask Mr. Reynolds a question? Mr. Reynolds, is it okay with you if I continue meeting with Mr. Wynekhy?
Absolutely.
Wynekhy?
Okay.
So, that's not a problem. So, can I just, I'll probably make a motion?
Okay.
Do you want to wind it up?
Yeah, Mr. Townsend had something he wanted to say first.
You know, there's a possibility that this issue might come up in the county, I don't, I don't know. But I was having lunch with Commissioner Young today, and she raised a question about the rooster. And I'm looking in here, it say a rooster is, is not necessary for eggs. Can somebody tell me what a rooster is used for?
Baby chickens. You need a rooster to have a fertilized egg that will then hatch. Without the rooster, you just get an egg that's not fertilized, and it's good to eat, but it won't hatch.
I'll go back and tell her that, thank you, because-
I knew that after research.
So, Mr. Reynolds, you do want us to take a vote on this?
Yes, sir. And, and before you do, I just ask you to consider one thing very carefully. As a father of two young boys who now realize that they can have chickens as pets, and I have two goldfish, three turtles, and two dogs, please, think about that before you go. I'm just kidding.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Myers, you get to make the motion.
Okay. I just wanted to point out real quick, if people have, if people live in communities that have homeowner, homeowner associations or covenants in their deeds and so forth that would prohibit this type of thing, this does not trump their homeowners agreements and so forth.
That would be my, my, my understanding, but still waiting on the motion.
Okay, well, I'm going to move that we, and, ask staff to draft an ordinance, a proposed ordinance, that will allow people to have up to eight hens, no roosters, that the distance from a person's own structure be eliminated, that the distance from the structure the hens are housed in, the shelter, be 50 feet from adjacent property owner's structures, and that we repeal that part of the ordinance that prohibits doves or pigeons, and that allows law enforcement to go out and shoot doves and pigeons. That that be stricken from the ordinance. That roosters not be allowed.
You've already said that.
Oh, I'm sorry. And no slaughtering of animals in the city limits.
I think we've got enough here. We just need a second.
Free roaming, to be allowed to be free roaming, but then-
Yes.
Did you say roaming?
Be allowed to be free roaming.
I would, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second. I, I would like to offer up a friendly amendment to that, is that it's not restricted to just what you said, because there's a number of other things that's been talked about here, that I'd like for, for them to be able to include, including what you opened up with, on how there's just some things that are kind of nutty about the way our ordinance is written. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, so. Thank you for coming. Additional monthly financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this item was brought on the agenda at the request, I believe it was, of Councilwoman DeWese, who wanted to talk about what other kinds of financial disclosures that this body wanted in the future.
I need you to take the conversation out, outside, please. Thank you.
And therefore, it's on the agenda, and then if we could determine what those are, we can move forward.
Okay. Ms. DeWese.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I apologize that I don't have my notes with me for all the things I was concerned about, but I do know that one of them, I would, I had asked for Mr. Barker, requested if, if Mr. Barker could report on the CNPA contract, on the monthly financial reports, what Public Works and Neighborhood Services staff was being used on a hourly basis, or however they chose to report it, so we can track that contract. And I apologize, I don't have the other information. I'll have to go back and look at that to see what it was. But that was a, one of the requests.
Okay. Okay. You're, okay, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, all right. Now, I want to put Mr. Townsend at ease here, as we, well, actually, we've got, doing an update on the flood, I'm sorry. Mr. Reynolds?
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear you.
You update on the flood?
The flood.
Oh, the flood, thank you. I'm sorry. My hearing sometime isn't all that great. Thank you, Mr. President, and let me start out by saying, you know, this is the first opportunity I've had to be involved in a climactic event with staff. And both Saturday and Sunday, the staff that were involved with this particular, literally out-of-the-blue event, and how they pulled together and were able to do the things that they did was just simply striking. This body, as well as the citizens of this great city, need to recognize the fine efforts of those staff. And that includes everyone from the individuals in Mr. Garza's department, to the fire department, to the police department, to our representatives that we did have at the EOC, to those people that were originally thinking that we were going to have an event, that turned out to be crisis managers and were part of the reason we were able to keep our damages across the street at the level that they were. So, you know, I certainly hope that everybody understands the great work that this particular group of employees did in this time of crisis, and it's to their efforts that we owe where we are. So my hat's off to them, as well as the mayor's, and we're excited to have them to be doing the jobs that they are. So let me give you a general overview of what we know at this point, and kind of the impact. If I could have Al and Derek go ahead and come up, if you would, please, gentlemen, to discuss, in case you have some questions. And feel free to interrupt me at any point as I walk through here. First of all, it's important to understand, you know, clearly, the amount of water that we received in the time period that we received simply exceeded all engineering that we had for our stormwater facilities. This city is to be complimented, as an aside, for what they did, and what you did in the year 2000, in recognizing that we really had some stormwater issues that we need to take care of. The, the, the progress that, you know, that we have made since that time to now has been striking. Eighty percent of the problem issues that the city has had, and had for hundreds of years, if you will, have been rectified at this point. But that being said, you have engineering for typically a 25-year event. And the reason that that's done is because, as I said before very briefly, is that you have a cost-benefit analysis to, to, in regards to addressing the engineerings of anything that is dealing with this type of natural event. And, and, and normally, that is between a 25- and 50-year event cycle. So we recognize that there are some things, that there are some events that will exceed the engineering. Good news, what did not exceed the engineering is this pond across the street, as Mr. Spears had said, and which was erroneously reported, that somehow that the pond had overflowed and flowed all of the downtown area here. That's not what occurred. As you can see from the photographic evidence, clearly, the water is going in the opposite direction. That body across the street did exactly what it was designed to do. What we did have was a failure elsewhere, and we had a failure in the movement of water from this point to up north, and there was some sewage involved with that failure. And we have, we have pictures of that, and can describe in some detail a little later, and exactly what that, what transpired there. But that was, that was the failure, and that was an engineering failure in that regards, but certainly not the failure of the park itself. One of the things that became clear, and it's been alluded to before up to this point, we had stuff clogging our stormwaters. So, and I know that this has been a touchy subject in the past, but I'm gonna bring it forward here in the next couple of months, about requiring bagging of yard waste to keep it out of the storm sewers. This is a problem. This caused some of the flooding in some of the areas that we experienced. Mr. Garza can, can describe that in a little more detail. But if we're going to make the investment in our stormwater system, and remember, the whole point of that is to keep our bayous clean and our waters clean. If we're gonna make that investment, let's do the simple things to ensure that it can work properly. So I'm gonna bring something forward relatively quickly in the next couple of months to, to, to address that issue, and I hope that we'll get the support of this body. We have, we have several different areas that throughout the city, and I'm not gonna go and outline exactly where our flood points were, but, but clearly, there were some major flooding levels. And one thing I think that the public needs to understand, and I was out all day on Saturday and half the day on Sunday, and it, I just could not believe the utter stupidity, and I use that term in every sense of the imagination, of people that are driving in these areas, and this could kill them. I literally saw a guy go down, racing down in a Honda Civic, opens up the door, water comes crashing into his car, and I'm thinking, "What in the world are you doing?" Don't mess with it, don't mess with it, don't mess with it, this is not the smart thing to do. I am very surprised that we did not have some fatalities. We had some, we had some water that was up to the roof levels of some vehicles, and I think we escaped a bomb there. As previously discussed, there were some issues, very minor issues with the CMP stadium, some minor issues with the amphitheater. The amphitheater, as Mr. Spears described, the hole that allows the electrical wiring to go in, into the back of the house, allowed water to go in as well. It was due to Mr. Garza, some of the efforts of his people over, over at the stadium. We were, what, this far from the electrical panel?
Close.
In the main electrical panel of the stadium, scrambling for pumps, shut everything down, and it was this close to being a major, major, major issue. Hats off, again, to their great work to allow that, to make sure that, that did not occur. We did get some significant damage. I have not been out there yet, but Osceola, it did have some significant damage, just an FYI. I haven't seen it firsthand. I don't know, Al, if you've been out there, you can describe what- I don't know, Al, if you've been out there, you can describe what.
The golf course is in pretty good shape, but the basement, where the golf carts are parked.
Yeah.
The roll-up door was down, the water came down the driveway, blew out the door, and of course, all the carts are down there, batteries, recharging equipment, the electrical switchgear for the office, I mean, for the building upstairs and the restaurant, so we've had a pretty good hit out there.
Moving on, traffic signals. We lost a total of seven signals due to flooding, but I believe they are all back at this point.
Power supply issues.
Street lighting, we had some lighting circuits that were also damaged, and then I've got a list of major drainage problem areas that I will send out to all of you so you can, you know where the major issues were in the city. That's essentially what we have at this point. What we're doing now is trying to put some dollar values on all this. We've been, we will be submitting that forward, and then in conjunction with the county, to determine whether or not we can make a disaster declaration here. I know that that's already been, or excuse me, for reimbursement, I know that the county's already requested that the governor do a disaster declaration. I do not believe it's happened yet, but that's out there as well. But staff stands by to answer your questions on any of the issues as we, and if we don't know, at this point, again, we're still getting some information, but we'll certainly make sure that we can get any information you need. Thank you, Mr. President.
Hey, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Reynolds, this brings me to a bigger question that I had someone recently ask me, and that is, we know, you know, the mayor runs the city and all that, but let's say the mayor is out of town somewhere in unreachable. Who is the number-one person who is in charge of city operations if the mayor is not be able to be reached? Who does the citizens look to as the number, the person that they would go to, the person leading the city at that point?
Mr. Johnson, I am a charter, I have the charter responsibility for day-to-day operations, and that would fall to me.
So you would be the number two, if we can't get a hold of the mayor, the community looks to Mr. Reynolds?
That's correct. I am in charge of day-to-day operations.
Okay. Just want to make that sure. I was asked that question, and I was really not sure of how to answer it, so that helps a lot. The other thing is, I agree with you about the bagging of storm debris and all, because again, as I alluded to earlier, I took a trip in Bay to Har Saturday afternoon, and the soup that I saw in that bayou, it's depressing. It really, it really is bad. And, you know, any efforts to handle that in a better situation, and I don't know the answer, I know stormwater is an issue all over the world, but we've got to do a better job, because it was soup, and it was really nasty in the bayou. Of course, I know we had, what, 13 inches of rain and whatever, but anything that we can do, any efforts in that regard.
Yes, sir, and above just the fact that it was soup in the bayou, it was actually blocking the drains, which caused the flooding, which actually impacted people's houses and businesses. And, you know, I know it's inconvenient, but at the end of the day, if we want this stuff to work, if we want this investment to pay off, we've got to be willing to spend a little time and bag our yard waste.
Right. Yeah, and I totally would support that effort, too. I agree with you. I live near a storm drain, and I've seen it get stopped up, and then the water's, you know, going over into people's yards.
Yes, sir.
It's just, it's a mess, but thank you very much.
Ms. Spears.
Yes. I agree with Mr. Reynolds. We need to do something about at least making it mandatory that people bag leaves and things like that, but I'm concerned about these retention ponds. I went around in the rain, taking pictures of Carpenter Creek, and I believe there's another citizen in the audience who went and took pictures of the retention pond at The Whispers, which is a retention pond that's been brought up at the Environmental Advisory Board meetings a number of times, is that we, due to our grass-cutting practices, have a lot of erosion in our storm, in our retention ponds, and Carpenter Creek was just muddy from the mud and the erosion from retention ponds, and The Whispers retention pond is just washed out, and Public Works will not even be able to get to the retention pond until the area that the trucks drive on to get to the retention pond is repaired, and that's impacting a piece of property next to the retention pond. It's quite severe.
You're talking about on Ellison there?
Yeah, I'm talking about The Whispers.
Well, I mean.
Not, no.
The property that's impacted, though, is on Ellison.
It's not on Ellison, it's, no, it's on, I don't know the name of the street, but it's in The Whispers.
Whispering Way?
Whispering Way, I think.
I know the Jernigans had some problems there when The Whispers was first built, you know, with the retention pond being insufficient.
Well, this is extreme, what's happened to that pond there, and, but what I'm getting to is this, I hope that our Environmental Advisory Board is looking at how we maintain our retention ponds, to make them more environmentally friendly, to keep them from eroding and putting dirt and sediment into Carpenter Creek and ultimately Bayou Tahar. So that's something else, I think, that we need to look at while we're looking at this issue of flooding, and the things that ultimately end up in our waterways.
Mr. Garza, that one at The Whispers, though, isn't that privately maintained?
It's a combination, President Paul. At the last Environmental Advisory Board meeting, I gave them a detailed description on how that pond system works and conjunct, together. The city's pond at the end of Whispering Way overflows into the target pond, it overflows into a wooded wetland, then indirectly goes into the creek. So there's a sequence there that's been chained together. The problem with that pond is that they're only sized for one inch of retention, and so when you have 20 inches of rain, they're just inundated, you know? They just can't keep up with the volume. They fill up, and then also, in The Whispers case, we've got some off-site sites that are doing nothing, just letting the water, their water sheet flow to us, and that's where we're getting the erosion. But the system works 99% of the time. Just in these extreme conditions, it's Katy bar the door. Keep in mind that Harpenter's Creek, from just the creek standpoint, a majority of the drainage basin is outside the city. Everything west of I-110 is in the county. So we don't even control half the flow that comes to the creek. When you look at the entire basin of Bay to Har and Harpenter's Creek, 38% of that basin's outside the city. We have to work with our counterparts. Now, the state's been a very good partner. They mitigated 350 acres of interstate corridor when they widened I-110, and that 40-acre pond is a testament to what they did.
Yes.
But again, with the event that we had Saturday, these ponds would have to be four and five times bigger than they are today, if even survived.
Ma'am, I know I indicated for you to come up, but Vice President had something that he needed to say.
Well, you know, we could cite all over the city where we had different incidents, and I just don't feel that that is productive here tonight, and we could, just talking on and on about what happened Saturday. That was an incident way beyond whatever we could expect, and we were prepared, but we were not prepared for, like, what we had Saturday. We all know we got deficiencies, and maybe we can learn from that particular exercise of what happened Saturday, but I don't think it's incumbent upon us. I had big problems over by Baptist Hospital. Everything, water was everywhere, folks, and it was just what's going to happen, and it's no fault, and I admire the staff. Fireman had to get a lady out of the house, two houses from me. I looked out of my backyard, I started to go swimming, because everything was water. I had lakes. I thought I had water, got rich in that waterfront property in District 7. Okay? So this was an incident that way beyond what we could handle, and we probably can learn from.
Mr. Owens.
If I could, I would like to just briefly offer an overview of how the storm drainage system for the city typically functions and operates, and Mr. Reynolds briefly touched on it. Stormwater drainage systems are statistically rated based on the storm event that they will handle. Most of the storm structure that is in the city was built originally back in the '40s and '50s, when storm events typically were handled at the three-year level. So most of them, the structure we have in the ground, will handle like a three-year event, which is about 1.8 inches of rainfall. We get that several times a year. Now, when we design, when we design new infrastructure, of course, we bring that up to current standards, which the Land Development Code calls for a 25-year event, and in most, probably 99% of the stormwater projects we do, we're able to meet that requirement of the Land Development Code and meet a 25-year event. But the issue we get into is the chain is only as strong as the weakest link, okay? So they're all interconnected, so that's when we run into the problems, and it's just like Al said, you can't make the ponds big enough to handle what we had to deal with Saturday. It's not feasible, and you can't do it. The cost of property is too expensive to do that, it's just not feasible. But we do the best we can with the resources that we have when we do the stormwater projects, and we do have issues, there's going to be other issues, but we just deal with them the best we can, and when we design for things of that nature, we just try to get the most bang for the buck that we have, so the taxpayers get what they, get what they're paying for.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Yes. Hello, I'm Barbara Albrecht, and I'd like to address the council and give you some general information about our area. We get 65 inches of rain annually. Most of it comes down in three-to-five-inch bursts. The tropical event that we had this weekend, we actually had that similar event happen the April after Hurricane Ivan. We got 14 inches of rain, followed three days later by nine more inches of rain. We have these events. Now granted, it's very, it's very timely that Mr. Owens explains that we have an old infrastructure that was designed in the '40s and the '50s, and that today we're trying to re-engineer, but the more we develop, and the more we pave over our open areas, the more severe our flooding will be. That's a commonality about stormwater and how that happens. Talk to the rural families that lived on Mobile Bay. They always had access to the bay system, and when they started building subdevelopments above them in the heart and the higherlands of the Mobile area, all of a sudden, when we started getting rain events, those people were getting flooded out. They'd never seen flooding in their life, and that's because the more we pave, the more we accelerate runoff. Now, Al Garza, Derek Owens, excellent engineers, they learn how to handle water. The biggest thing about handling water, slowing it down, giving it the opportunity to perk, okay? We have so many parking lots within the city of Pensacola that are barely used. When you guys have the opportunity to renew these properties, infiltrate so that you're using some of the new technology that's available to have parking lots and pavement that allows water to perk through, instead of putting more asphalt on top of it. The areas that we saw the most extensive flooding in, and I was the citizen that was out, I'm a water shed coordinator for the university, the most extensive flooding that I saw was occurring in areas where we had a lot of new development. Look at The Whispers. This is this area that used to be a riparian zone, completely tree-covered. Now it's got over 100 homes in it. These homes all have manicured yards, you're inviting people to have a lawn, you're inviting that lawn to be cared for by a service, you're inviting the addition of fertilizer, you're inviting all this activity to what was once an area that basically caught the flooding when our creeks jumped the banks. Now, if you went back 100 years before today, and you had wooded areas and you had riparian zones, rivers and creeks jumped their banks, and the rivers go through the trees, and the trees help them to slow down the velocity, thus trapping the nutrients and taking the seeds. We've completely omitted this by the way we design bridges today. We go right to the edge of where a creek is, we go over it, and then we continue on our way. We should be developing our areas so that we leave those riparian zones. These rivers, these creeks that we live around, that we covet, that we spend more money to live next to, they're a living system, they're a dynamic system, they meander, they change over time. So, I mean, our philosophy has to change, but the flooding and whatnot that we had this weekend was totally due to the way we're developing. And I mean, you're talking about annexing voluntarily, annexing different parts of the city, so ideally, you can probably pick up a little more tax money from these areas. That's fine, but think about the natural corridors that we had in this area, and how our stormwater can infiltrate into the ground, because right now, we're not doing that as well as we could be. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we're wilting here, Mr. Gerald. Go ahead.
I do understand.
We've got three more things to cover.
Well, at this point, I would like to offer a practical and sensible solution to what we've heard today, and what we've learned from the heavy rainfall, as well as the damage, and it sounds to me as if the areas that are most seriously impacted can be identified. There is something we can do. For example, in New York, when a blizzard was coming, the ice was put on, got out on the bridge, and the plows were out there working as the storm occurred. We didn't wait, and what I'm referring to is to be practical about it, and in particular, at the corner of 11th Avenue and Fisher. When we see the pond rising, we know it's going to overflow, can't we sandbag and divert that water flow of water to another location during the storm, rather than sit around and wait for it to overflow and flood the homes that are in the area? Preparation.
Well, I'll let the engineers do that, but anytime you hold water from going in one place, you can be creating a problem downstream.
That is a possibility, but we have the bayou to the east of where that flooding occurs, so if that water, if there's any way that it can be diverted from going into the pond, we know then that the pond's going to overflow and flood the homes. So the same as they put ice on the bridges and on the roads before the blizzard, before all the snow gets there, that is an effort to prevent accidents and those kinds of things. So if we could sandbag, and sandbags are used, or other mechanisms that, I mean, materials that they may be familiar with, if we see the thing rising up to the top, can we not stop it and send it to another area where the runoff will not back up and cause that particular area to overflow and flood?
Well, I'd invite you to sit down with Mr. Garza and.
No, I'm not an engineer, they can figure that out.
Mr. Owens.
You got to just do what I was, what I'm talking about, they can figure out how to do that, or just divert those waters from going into a place that you know, if it continues to fill up, it's going to overflow and flood the residents.
Just a quick comment. I think he ought to be your replacement, you know, when you retire, so. No, I'm just kidding, just kidding. All right. Yes, sir.
In, using Councilman Gerald's logic, the retention pond is the ice, I mean, is the crew, is the rock salt on the ice. It is the preventative measure, and it works 99% of the time. Again, we had a scenario where its capacity was exceeded. Again, we had a scenario where its capacity was exceeded in the refrigerator. The reason the pond's there is that there's more water can come in than can get out. And that's what caught us. When the pond was full, there was still more water coming in than can get out. There are two discharge points for that pond. One in the northeast corner, one in the southeast corner. One goes east, the other one goes southeast.
Okay. Yeah, that educated enough, so. Okay. All right. Yeah, thank you. Well, I want them to have as much time as they need. So the next two things that I want to get out of the way, and as I just need a motion from you guys so we can get them on the agenda for next time, okay, is a discussion item, is one has to do with housing update, you know, what, state what your concern was.
My question was just where the process is in terms of the Housing Director.
Okay. So that, we'll get an update on that next committee of the whole. And then the other one is how we do nominations for committees. There seems to be some angst today about the rules as they exist, and so if we need to change those, let's have that as a topic for next time. Do I have a motion for those two?
I'll make a motion, yeah, that we take a look at those.
Those two things, okay.
I'll second it.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Can I discuss something real quick?
Well, okay, yes, sir, real quick.
Real quick, in addition to that, it was brought to my attention that someone thought that I had a conflict because one of the persons nominated today was a business partner of mine in a piece of property. And I just want to let this council and the public know that I ran this by the city attorney and that he felt that there was no conflict and that I was able to vote for this person. So the person that brought that to my attention, I just want them to know that we did run that to ground. Thank you.
Okay.
I also asked the same question.
You did?
And got an answer.
And that gentleman used to be my wife's employer, so.
Really? And my doctor knows his brother-in-law.
Okay. Okay.
And Vicki, who spoke about the chickens, is my neighbor, not my next-door neighbor, but-
Okay. All right. Back to serious stuff here. These gentlemen, these employees have been very, very patient, waiting for us to be able to get to them. I want to make sure that they have an opportunity to express their concerns to us right now. And not reading off the email that you sent us or the, or this here, is just talk from your heart and that most of what you're going to be complaining about is outside of this council's hands. You know, you work for the mayor, and for us to start interfering, and that gets us into some really, really touchy areas. But you have the floor, sir. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Isn't it just best that the mayor cuts the best deal he can with the unions and brings it to us to be ratified? I mean-
Well, here's the deal. These guys, and remember, I don't want to go in too much what was closed door, but the question was raised, is what about the, how many, how many are viewer, about 80-something? I don't remember the number now.
I don't know the exact amount, but back when the state retirement was offered, employees could either stay on the general pension or go under the state retirement system. So the employees that stayed on the general pension were the older, a lot of the older type guys, because they made it mandatory that the newer employees had to go on the state retirement. So then, when the union issue came up, it was what, to a 16? I think a range 16 could belong to a 15.
Yeah, up there with us, the former Bill Gators and the supervisor.
Yeah. Only to a certain point could they go union. So these people in the middle who were on the general pension but could not join a union, and then the union went and struck a deal that also affected us, who were not able to join the union and were on the general pension.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate, I'm not being insensitive to your issue at all, but I, at some point, I mean, the mayor and his office has got to negotiate with the unions and employees and then bring this council, that deal that he's blessed for us to bless or not, is the way that I understand it. Am I missing something here, Mr. President?
We are not union. You cannot join the union.
Well, union and, that's why I said and, there is employees.
No, no, no. These guys are having their status negotiated away by somebody else.
I know.
Yes. And that, this is my recommendation to you. I want to tell you guys, my heart goes out to you. It bleeds for you. It really does. And I don't think it's entirely fair. What I would like for every one of you guys that fall into that situation to recommend is that you get in a line and form up outside of Mr. Asmar's office and complain to him one by one. And so, anyway.
Well, that was, we caught wind that, I don't know if the unions voting tomorrow on their part, and then y'all were ratifying it Thursday. That's why we wanted to come down here, and we got the letter, and we still wanted to come and read it anyway, because it just ain't right that somebody that's not even, not down in our employees, but they're at the bottom scale at our department, voting for something for upper management.
Yeah, for their bosses.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be like us, negotiating the mayor's contract. I mean-
Thank you, Mr. President. And what I had said earlier about my concern about the legality, you're obviously very concerned about this, too, that there are employees that were not able to join in this union, but their livelihood and their retirement is being decided by this negotiation. And, you know, we did the Mercer study, and I voted against it in the end. We were trying to do some really good things and trying to get the discussion going. And I had mentioned that really, in essence, that you would want to sit down with each employee and say, what hurts them least? Do they want a raise now and change the pension? Or is the pension, they're closer to pension time and they need that, and they're not as concerned with a raise? And that each individual employee, or group of employees at least, should be listened to. And I think them writing this letter, I happened to get it right after they delivered. I had stopped by to get mail, and I read it immediately, and I am concerned about the legality. I believe they're coming to us not to involve us and for us to step into negotiation. I certainly am not in that position and don't think that we should be. But we need to ensure that the employees, that was my concern in the meetings, that their needs are addressed and that what is happening to them is in fact legal. So that's my request, that the letter they have presented to this council be addressed by our attorney, even though he's not directly involved in the negotiation, he is the attorney for the citizens, for this council, for the mayor, and for the employees. And then also the negotiating team, I think they need to respond to this because they're in the gray area, and that's not acceptable. It's just not acceptable.
Well, I'm not sure that I agree with you, that it's something for the negotiating team to deal with us. They, I think that's for these employees to go to the people that did that negotiating, that we're kind of out of that. We're dealing with the labor issue. And their status actually could have been improved, you know, and we wouldn't be questioning the legality of it then. We may have been able to improve their situation more than, you know, reduce it. And so I, I'm not sure that I'm up with you on that. I think their issue is with Mr. Asmar.
Right. What I'm saying is that their concern as a result of those negotiations, not that they need to question the negotiations, but their concern is as a result of that, and they're questioning the legality of what has happened to them. So it's outside the negotiating team, but Mr. Asmar or whoever has negotiated this, whether it's the attorney that we have hired, that was my concern in that meeting as well, is how have the employees been treated? Have they had it explained to them? Has it been simplified to the point that they can individually make a decision on what is best for them? And I don't think this group of employees, and there may be others, have had that opportunity. And that's what I'm concerned about.
Okay. Before I get to you guys, would you be prepared to address that before Thursday night, whether it's tonight or an email response to us tomorrow?
Yeah. Reminded me.
I mean, with all due respect, I'll do my best, but you have to understand, I don't know anything about this, and the first thing I'm going to do is call the labor attorney and find out what his answer is. And again, I do a lot of things, and I'm not dodging responsibility for what I do, but I just, my office didn't have a hand in this, and you're asking me to reinvent the will. I'll do the best I can. And quite frankly, I think that's a shame that you didn't, Mr. Dr. Pratt.
Just can I finish really quickly? Because the other thing that was mentioned in the letter was Mr. Rusty Wells, when this was discussed in '07, that it could not be reopened and changed. That needs to be addressed as well, and it may be a third party that needs to be involved in this, just so we understand that the employees' rights have been protected. It's recorded. So if the letter could be analyzed and responded to.
Dr. Will.
The first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to thank you, gentlemen, for coming down. The second thing that I'd like to do is thank you for the time that you spent, all this time getting your issue on the table. I think the dilemma we face is because under the new charter, we're not over the employees. In other words, the only thing that I think we have a part in is the collective bargaining process at the very end and as it proceeds. And so, in my mind, and please correct me if wrong, I'm biggybacking on what I heard Councilman President Hall say, it's not that we're not unsympathetic to what you're saying, as I don't know for sure in my own mind if we have the right to provide you the relief that you would like to have. Am I making any sense? And so the frustration is, as Councilwoman DeWee says, we feel your pain and we feel your frustration, but I don't know if we have the legal basis for stepping in and making the changes that y'all would like to have made, so.
What do we need to do to find out before it goes and gets changed? Then it has to come all the way back through because it was done wrong, and then that's to be changed again. To get it stopped before it ever gets that far, we have to come back and go through all this and winds up a big mess.
Well, here's where I think we stand on the legal issue. We've got at least two or more lawyers in the room, and I'm going to try to put my legal hat on, is that you work at the pleasure of the mayor. The mayor pays you what the mayor wants to pay you. But we're forced to negotiate with the union employees. The mayor has a target that he wants to get to in pension reform, and that's going to affect everybody. And long-term, for some people, good; short-term, for other people, maybe not so good, but that he's got to answer up to a promise that he made to the people of Pensacola when he was elected. And so that you work at the pleasure of the mayor. He decides what you're going to be paid. And the unions don't have to operate under that, they've got their collective bargaining. So I don't think it's a matter of legality. And, but I do think, I do think it was wrong in how you did, and you've got my sympathy, and I know that doesn't, that's not worth much. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I share the concerns that I think that it is important for us to clarify for everyone what was promised, what was understood or misunderstood in the FRS transition. I briefly looked at the, Mr. Wells's comment just a second ago, I looked at it earlier, and I read it as the question of, you know, once you have ended your time, then your pension can't be changed. And so there's some interesting stuff, and it would be nice to hear exactly what was written or documented from that process, because I think we all need to understand that. But we have been operating for a while under the assumption that we, as a city government, had the ability to make changes to the general pension. We've gone through many versions of that, and so I think we just need to make sure that that's in writing and clear to everyone. But I will beg to differ with several comments that were made. We aren't without any authority. We do have control of the budget, and, or we should at least decide that we have that control. And, you know, I think that almost in the sense of, and I'm not making promises of any sort, but I saw the proposal for the union as they were sort of trading future gains for immediate gains. And there is an ability that we have, you know, I haven't, I got the budget this morning, I haven't really looked at it, but what sort of immediate gains would help balance some of the future losses? We were trying to do that when we tried to deal with the budget, with the pensions a couple of years ago, with the leave payouts that we were trying to do in conjunction with, all right, we'll give this now, take this for later. And so I think that those kinds of things, while we don't have to negotiate with general employees who aren't in the union, we do need to talk to them and see what can we do to make this transition palatable, because these are things that we have to do, and we have, as I've always understood it, we as the council have the right to make changes to their pensions before there was a union without any sort of negotiations. We could have just decided it, and we held off on that previously, and now with the union, it causes interesting things. But I think first, we really need to make sure that we can find some documentation or whatever that was given out that explained how that FRS thing, so that there's, people don't feel like things were pulled out from under them and there's a more clear understanding. But ultimately, I think we as a council do have an opportunity to talk about what can we do and what can't we do with the funds that are available. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, I agree with what Dr. Pratt just said. And I have a question.
Okay.
Was the Audit Selection Committee report, what happened to that?
It was pulled, it was determined by the chair of that committee that what we had done is gone in, what the mayor had presented the first time, we went and affirmed that as the committee, that by Florida law, we seemed to feel like was sufficient if we just affirmed that. But apparently, somebody has advised the chairman differently on that, and so that report's been pulled. Yes, sir.
Yeah, let me clarify, Mr. President. Essentially, there was a problem in regards to the scoring system that determined the final winner, excuse me, the final individual, the firm that was selected, and the chairman of the committee received a complaint on that, reviewed it, agreed with that, and there will be another meeting of the committee at this point, and the chairman will then make sure everybody's aware of what the issues were and what the remedy is.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just very quickly, while we're talking about that, because I have been contacted by citizens that are still concerned about that being ratified as it was instead of starting over, and that it would be advisable for us to get an opinion from the Auditor General about that ratification. So as you move forward, if it is not a valid process, you'll have that addressed before you've gone through all this trouble and ratified and chosen someone, and it was not appropriate per the law, the legal requirement, not the guidance part, the non-rerequirement part.
Yes, sir.
And I believe that, and I'll check on that, but I'm pretty sure that we actually talked to both the Auditor General and the Attorney General on this issue, but I will double-check.
I just think in writing if you have talked to them.
I have already asked the Auditor General for an opinion. The Auditor General responded to me and told me that they do not give legal opinions, that this is, that we should seek a legal opinion from the Attorney General. I think that we should do that. I would like to know if you can ratify an illegal RFP. And also, normally, when you ratify something, it's something the body that you are a member of has done. And what we've done is ratify something that a body outside of the Audit Selection Committee has done. And also, I was told, or we were told, that the language in the RFP regarding the mayor's role would be taken out of the RFP, but it wasn't. So based upon what the Auditor General has-
Well, actually- Well, actually, we did at a meeting of that, we did vote to change all of that wording to the appropriate. The references to the mayor's office were all removed on there. In fact, we stated it as the Audit Committee, not the Audit Selection Committee, but the Audit Committee.
Can I make a motion that we ask the State Attorney General for an opinion as to the ratification of that RFP? It wouldn't stop the process.
Sure we can, but Mr. Messer came to one of our meetings and spoke about the Attorney General's opinion on that. Either you called him or you got in a written email or from her, I'm sorry. You know, let's talk about that for a minute. I didn't request an opinion. I mean, I gave an opinion on ratification and that was done. But you referred to something that the Attorney General had written, whether it was 10 years ago, five years ago, or a month ago.
I honestly, I don't-
I think you're talking about a Supreme Court case that Mr. Messer was involved in. I've read the case on ratification. I'm going to make a motion that we ask the Attorney General for an opinion as to whether or not you can ratify an illegal RFP.
Second.
Okay. Motion, second discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. For the chairman.